Springs, Florida, Tuesday, August 26, 6:30. Roll call, please.
Mayor Kulianis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
A reflection. And after we have our reflection, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, let us pray. Holy God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a city to address the affairs of Tarpon Springs. And so we ask that your blessings will be over the Board of Commissioners. Dear God, give them integrity and wisdom and foresight. Let them run from division and embrace unity. We thank you for the citizens who are here. May this session today be like none other. And may Tarpon Springs never be found guilty of thinking we can do this on our own, but with you we can do all things. This we pray, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. Okay, we're gonna go to public comments. These will be public comments on things that are not on the agenda.
Good evening. My name's David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue down the street.
Excuse me one second, David. Was that sign? It's cleared. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Article 1, Section 8, Clause 11 of our current Constitution states to capture, capture both land and water with the intention of uniformly bankrupting the United States in Clause 4 of Section 8 in Article 1. Again, as I've said in the past, George Washington in his farewell address states that we are being given a useful lesson on our heads, that he is here to indirectly undermine that which cannot be directly overthrown, claiming that he is of greatest rankness and truly one's worst enemy. Capturing, undermining, uniformly bankrupting, hiding behind the Mona Lisa smile on the $1 bill is two separate symbols stating debts, both public and private, representing one debt land and one debt water in its capture. The Declaration of Independence states that this government is here to eat us out of our subsistence. And when it becomes necessary to dissolve our current political structure and assume among the powers of the earth separate but equal stations capturing the water, it declares to throw off our current government and lay its new foundation as an unwarranted jurisdiction as process there too, declaring a long train of usurpations that mankind is more disposed to suffer while such evils are still sufferable, undermining, bankrupting, creating debts, both public and private, both land and water, evincing our current constitution as a design to reduce us under absolute despotism as declared, taking our liberty, property, and life claimed as due process while birthing unwarranted water jurisdictions under the 14th Amendment, thereof unconstitutionally using our current constitution as a form of reprisal, as a bill of attainder, a letter of marquee, as an ex post facto law reflective of a contrived debt contracted and engaged into before the adoption of our current constitution in Article 6, dissolving our current constitution in an attempt to invoke a maritime assumption of power over an original jurisdiction in regards to fact and equity in the substance of Article 3, Section 2, makes the constitutional hypocrisy of George Washington and his money notwithstanding of constitutional legitimacy and is no good. Thank you.
Ms. Swenson, 327 Manatee Lane. I have something a lot more basic. I opened a small business and I had one, but I moved. And I occupy two small spaces in a older strip mall. And I opened them up, and you may not think this is a lot in relation to the overall capital budget we have, but as a small business owner, I am not an Amazon. I am not a Facebook. I am not a whatever large business. So I went to turn on my water, which is fine. And I said, I only needed one of my waters open, not both businesses, not both offices, because I might use the bathroom five times a day and, you know, the sink seven times a day. Well, they said, no, you have to have both bathrooms open. So all I'm gonna say is it took me $635 to have both places open. And that wasn't a portion of my credit score. As a commercial business, it required $635 down. And I am gonna have to pay $200 a month, $100 more than I used to. It may sound insignificant, but as a small business owner, I would say we talk a lot about residential costs, but let's look at small business costs, because these affect us all as small business owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Katie Taylor, 657 Haven Place, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I would like to apologize first for not informing you all of the Rose Cemetery cleanup cancellation on Saturday. Thank you, Mayor, for coming out and whoever else came out with you. So I apologize for that. The next cleanup has been rescheduled to Saturday, September 27, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. As we all know, when Mark was here for 45 years, no doubt he did tons of multitasking. When he left, I imagine tons of knowledge and experience left with him. I gather for a long-term employee that retire, we would usually take more than one person to cover that load. Some employees who probably have already been doing the work, but maybe not receiving the pay. In the Beacon News on the $19 million discussion, Commissioner Kulyas stated, "We still don't have a plan on what projects we're going to do and the priority of them." For over two years, I've asked for a water splash pad in Dorset Park to be put on the capital improvement plan. And my question in this 10-year plan, are any projects in the plan for water splash pad in Dorset Park, if so, what is the priority? If not, can it please be added to the projects and plan provided timeline? As we all know, climate change is real, and families and children who utilize this community park would surely appreciate a water pad in that park with temperatures coming over 100 degrees, temperatures the last few years. If this goes to vote by referendum, can it be placed on the ballot? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Katie. Katie, the, our public budget hearing, where the public can interject on the budget, is Wednesday, September 3 at 6:30. Okay, anyone else?
Evening. Peter Lakkas, 514 Ashland Avenue. It's nice to be back, although it's hard to leave nature and the peacefulness and calmness that it can bring to one. So, my reading for today will be Isaiah 13, various chapters. Raise a banner on a bare hilltop. Shout to them, beckon to them to enter the gates of the nobles. I have commanded my holy ones and I have summoned my warriors to carry out my wrath, those who rejoice in my triumph. See, the day of the Lord is coming, a cruel day with wrath and fierce anger, to make the land desolate and destroy the sinners within it. The stars of heavens and their constellations will show their light. The rising sun will be darkened and the moon will not give its light. I will punish the world for its evil, the wicked for their sins. I will put an end to the arrogance of the haughty and will humble the pride of the ruthless. I will make man scarcer than pure gold, more rare than the gold of Seifor. Therefore, I will make the heavens tremble and the earth will shake from its place at the wrath of the Lord Almighty and the day of his burning anger. We're seeing a lot of anger these days and it doesn't seem like there's any firemen around to put the fires out. But I wanted to speak about something more citywide, our traffic patterns. Now that schools started and the buses are back out, we really need to do something about the light at MLK and Alt. 19, 'cause it does not change enough during the day. Buses back up all the way past Banana. Same thing on Mears and Alt. 19. You've got two lights there. Both of them have left turn signals. One, on MLK, is allowed westbound traffic to turn south. And on Mears, it's leftbound traffic to turn right. You need to have FDOT put those left turns on both sides at the same time. Have a few more seconds left, so we need to really get back to looking at Distant. I remember we had that seminar when, three, four years ago, at the AME Church. And it was pretty much decided to open it up. And we got money from Forward Pinellas to do studies and stuff. And yet, here we go. And we need that access, not only for traffic, for fire safety, but access to the college. And lastly, we need to look at opening up Lime Street at Safford. There's no reason why the city can't reach out to the county and look at opening that intersection. You've got on Safford, a stop sign on Lincoln, Morgan, MLK, and then from there all the way up to Lemon, no stop signs. So it wouldn't be that hard to open up Lime and put stop signs there. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Mayor and Mr. City Manager. Another problem we have in Tarpon, and this really should come from the city manager to do this. We need to contact the county. The road around Land and Drive, church on the bayou, all the way to Gulf Road, when the storms that we've been having, it's eating away at the right-of-way to the water. It's coming up. It's flooding up into the people's yards and to the yard of the church of the bayou. It's eroding very, very bad. And we've been asking for over 50 years for the county to do something. And they haven't done it yet. Old timers who are no longer here would come up here and speak about it. It's very bad now. The trees are gonna fall in pretty soon. And it's a danger, because people use that road to go to the school. The buses use it. And they're gonna have to do something. And as y'all go to your homes, look at it. It's eroding away very, very bad. It's a very dangerous situation. And we're gonna have to get on the county. They need to do something to take care of it.
Anyone else? Okay.
Good evening. I'm John Saxer. I live in Holiday though, but my area of work is in Tarpon Springs. There's all these projects talked about that we could do to improve the city. And the project that I wanna talk about would bring the rightful glory to Tarpon Springs. I've made one of the top five archaeological discoveries in the history of the world. Turns out to be 2,400 ancient stone anchors around Florida. I get criticized by the professional archaeologists all the time. I'm nagated on YouTube and the rest of the media because they just don't wanna face the fact that in the ancient past, there were giants. In the ancient past, there were gods. And we dealt with them back then. Right now, we have an opportunity with a piece of land that Costa and I worked on together to put the stone circle of ancient stone anchors with holes in them in a circle there. And it can actually bring glory to Tarpon Springs more than any other project that anybody else can conceive of. When I first started with Frank, Commissioner Frank, it was 25 years ago, telling them about these stone anchors and the fact that... And I've been through seven different mayors. Costa realized that this was a good project, so we decided to put a rock garden together. I want those stones that were supposed to go there to be put back there. And I have deals worked out with private community citizens to buy each of those stone anchors for the stone circle, so it wouldn't cost the city any money. And that was the agreement I had with Costa. The city had no right to steal my stone anchor. I wanna put back right where it was. Thank you.
Okay, any further public comments? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item number one, award file for the Aeration Basin Cleaning and Debris Removal. Number two, increased file for the PFM Financial Advisor. Number three, attorney fees, Johnson Jackson PLC. Number four, award file, pumps and equipment repair services utilizing Pasco County contract. Number five, increased file for single-source purchase of fleet, original equipment, manufacturer, parts, and services. Number six, award file for the police patrol vessel. And number seven, award file for the flooring products and installation services. Does any commissioner wish to pull any of these items?
Number seven.
Seven? And anybody else? No? Okay, so let's vote on the, entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda items 1 through 5. 1 through 6, excuse me.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? Let's go to roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
A vice mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a suggestion. Chris, this, Chris? I didn't want him to have to come up. This was just a suggestion.
Chris, can you introduce yourself?
Yep. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Public. Chris Tada, the new Public Works Director here in Tarpon Springs.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Back to me?
You're back to you.
Okay. All I wanted to suggest to you was any purchases that you make, if you're gonna do it on rugs, just do solution-dyed nylon. It's virtually the best that's on the market. So I've had 40 years of doing carpet work, and I'm just gonna make that suggestion. That's the only reason I pulled it. And I also could get Banther to get smile and laugh.
I was gonna say, you have to go easy on him tonight. It's his first meeting. You can't go too hard.
Okay.
Yeah, we're getting...
Well said.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
Okay.
And welcome, welcome to the team.
Thank you. If I didn't pull it, we wouldn't get to meet him anyway.
Oh, I'm glad you did. I'm glad you did. Okay, let's, can I hear a motion to approve item number seven?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna deviate a little bit. We're gonna go ahead and pull, we're gonna bring items number nine and 11 forward now, if that's okay. Is that all right with everybody? And, 'cause that way they don't have to hang around all night for whatever we're gonna be talking about. So... Nine, oh, which one?
11 and 12.
Oh, I'm sorry, 11 and 12.
11's deferred.
Yeah, it's only 12.
Just 12.
It's just 12, okay. I'll get this straight. Just 12. All right. Reading, city attorney?
We're doing 12?
Yeah, number 12.
Do you just want the quasi-judicial reading?
Yep.
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. Mayor, Commissioners, is there any ex parte communication or conflicts of interest on this?
No.
You want me to swear anybody in?
Is anyone gonna testify? This is a second reading, correct?
Still need to do this?
Anybody else gonna speak on this? You need to stand up and raise your right hand?
Just in case you have to. You'll be sworn in, just in case you wanted to...
Do you swear firm your testimony before the Board of Commissioners is the truth? So help you.
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. This is Application 25-16. This is a second reading of an annexation up in the north end of town on Alt. 19 in Anclot Road. You have three ordinances. Ordinance 2025-08 is the annexation. Ordinance 2025-10 is the future land use map amendment from the Pinellas County designation of residential office general to the City of Tarpon Springs designation of office. And ordinance 2025-09 is the zoning atlas amendment from Pinellas County designation of general professional office to the City of Tarpon Springs designation of residential office. There's no new information to add to the records since first reading. Staff recommendation is to approve all three ordinances as previously presented. Thank you.
Okay, let's, any questions of staff? Commissioner Banther?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
No.
None for me as well? Now we go to, go to any public comments on this item? And Austin, any public comments?
There are no online comments.
Okay.
Mayor, you want me to read each ordinance by title and then we'll do a motion and a vote?
Okay.
Ordinance 2025-08, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending the future land use map for 0.77 acres or less of real property located along the west side of North Pinellas Avenue, approximately 65 feet north of the Anclot Road intersection and including Fairview subdivision, Block 11, lots 4, 5, 18, 19, 20, and 21. Application 2516 from Pinellas County Residential Office General, ROG, category to City of Tarpon Springs Office O category, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. That's ordinance 2025-08, read by title only on second reading. Publication was July 2 and August 13, 2025.
Okay. Like to entertain a motion to approve Application 2025-16?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Are there any Commissioner comments on this item?
Yeah, I had a quick question I wanted to ask. Renee, why does it say denial on here? Was that on the planning and zoning?
That was the original, the original staff recommendation. It went through Planning and Zoning Board with the recommendation of approval. So I'm following suit on this, so...
So it was changed due to...
When the, I mean, the Board's gone through first reading. It's gone through first reading with Planning and Zoning Board. So yes, at this point, we're recommending approval. I'm not gonna change, you know...
Okay, I was just asking.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That was confusing, yeah.
Mayor, can we add to the motion that it is also approving ordinance 2025-08? So we can do each ordinance separately?
Yes. Can you, who made the motion?
I've motioned or second, I forget.
I made the motion.
Can you, would you add that?
Say the amendment again, sir?
Just to add ordinance 2025-08 as part of the motion.
I amend my motion to add ordinance 2025-08.
Another second? Okay. If no further comments, roll call, please.
This is for ordinance 2025-08. Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
So this is ordinance 2025-09, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending official zoning atlas for 0.77 acres or less of real property located along the west side of North Pinellas Avenue, approximately 65 feet north of the Anclot Road intersection and including Fairview subdivision, Block 11, lots 4, 5, 18, 19, 20, and 21. Application 2516 from Pinellas County GEO, general professional office to City of Tarpon Springs RO, residential office, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. That is ordinance 2025-09, read by title only on second reading, published on July 2 and August 13, 2025.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Agreed.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-10, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing 0.77 acres or less of real property located along the west side of North Pinellas Avenue, approximately 65 feet north of the Anclot Road intersection and including Fairview subdivision, Block 11, lots 4, 5, 18, 19, 20, and 21. Application 2516, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. That is ordinance 2025-10, read by title only on second reading, published July 2 and August 13, 2025.
Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance 2025-10?
So moved.
You have a second? Any, no discussion? Any, no discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
That was easier than the last time, huh? Okay, let's now move, um... To item number eight. And it's voter referendum on nineteen-point-three million-dollar bank loan. Commissioner Cuyas, so what I'm, what I'm gonna do here, just so we... Commissioner Cuyas is gonna make his, his presentation. Then I'm gonna go to each Commissioner, other Commissioner, to make a comment. Then I will move to public comments. Then we'll come back for a motion. If that's okay with everyone. So Commissioner Cuyas?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Tarpon Springs, my fellow residents, everybody here tonight, everyone here watching from home. Uh, it's important that, uh, everyone is paying attention and aware of this historic, uh, agenda item here in this community. I present to be transparent, straightforward, as things should be represented to you. I will break it down in a simple form for everyone to understand that decisions made today have consequences for your pocket immediately tomorrow. I'm here to show you as what we try to portray that's being presented is not really being financed. And what we're here to see is where we're doing the capital improvement projects, why the projects keep shifting, and why this board, in which I hope after hearing the truth about the decisions that are made tonight, that they can come together for a referendum, as they should, dealing with a historic amount of money like this. I don't take this lightly. This is not a game to me. The difference in people's taxes in their pockets bother me. I could never spend this type amount of money without your voter approval and feel happy. I wouldn't be comfortable walking around town. I wouldn't be comfortable looking people in the eye because we decided to do a philosophical change without true awareness to the community and make those decisions. And there's a lot of consequences. There's a lot of decisions that have led up to where we're at today. And my fellow board members have to face that with the truth. They can't run away from, it was really needed, it was an emergency. There's plenty of emergencies in this community. But timing and when we say yes to a couple of things, we have to say no. And if we don't say no for certain things, then we can't say yes to all the great things that we should be worried about in this community. And so... The importance of this loan. And I wanna first debunk some myths that, you know, the city staff, the mayor, and the city manager have portrayed in what we're trying to do in financing these projects. And again, how they affect your pockets now from the expedited decisions these board members have decided to do. And they haven't told you this whole time. They have not been transparent about how it really affects your everyday life. Not only in today, but in year five, and especially years six through ten. So I wanted to debunk this whole, you know, as the mayor put out six days ago, you'll see that some of these items have already changed. There's no real plan. And there's still, everything changed up until today in which someone directed the Public Information Officer to put a memo out about capital improvement projects a couple hours ago. I mean, I think we're about three months too late on that. And then we also ended up having the city manager write this nice detailed email to us, but maybe we could have had a third budget to go over it all. I didn't cancel the budget. I didn't decide to cancel the biggest budget in Tarpon Springs history without this big, beautiful mayor's bill, you know? And, and the problem with this is, there's no transparency. We canceled the budget, some people went on vacation, we didn't even have a third one, and this is the biggest budget the city manager has ever faced. The loan that we're asking for, on top of the biggest budget, is something this board needs to really consider in what we're doing. And so, the fire station. The fire station was already approved and paid for and budgeted within our finances through the penny fund. So we have been lying to you about we're financing something that we already had budgeted for. And so where's that money going? And why would anybody, in their respective mind, want to pay and lose one-point-three million dollars in interest to finance a building we already have budgeted for? Where's that six million dollars going? And so we're gonna find out today. We're gonna ask some very tough questions for everyone. The Craig Park seawall, I'm gonna go through it how, that was already budgeted. But yet we're throwing up and we're putting it up in front of you as if that's a project that's financed. Where's the one-point-six million dollars going for that? There's several other projects that kept getting put out and put in, and today is basically our third budget in a way. And, and a reason to show that unfortunately, we weren't prepared. You know, uh, my, my, my mayor can fall back on being a finance and an audit person, but he finances a car the same way you do. He finances a house the same way you do. And so, and I've looked at this stuff very well tonight. And I'm here to give you the consequences and how our funding and our budgeting is gonna be stripped from us in several years shortly after. The building of the new municipal golf course, that was a project that was gonna come in front of the board, no matter what. And then this big, beautiful bill came out of nowhere. And they pushed it through with it. So we would have to say yes to this project in order to accept the other ones. And there's no clear definite what those other ones are. And so the golf course is something right now was projected to make about seven-hundred thousand dollars profit. It will more than likely pay for itself in a few years. And after the projections that I received from Mr. Keiger, even with the debt service, it's projected to make close to eight, nine-hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-twenty-eight, somewhere when, when it starts picking up. So that was one of the healthiest projects that for some reason got presented with this bill of finance projects that were already budgeted, uh, to try to make up for the interest and, and the shortcomings that they're gonna take from your pocket to expedite these projects. And so... The Beckett Bridge utility, you saw for three months. Everybody saw for three months that that was the project that was gonna come forward. And then a couple of weeks ago, they take it out. I thought we were worried about our cost of inflation towards the biggest projects. But yet, we, we have somehow forgotten about our philosophy and why we wanted to take on these loans anyways. Our electrical and water plant. And they can say this is all, you know, this is part of the process or not, not in Tarpon Springs. We ain't seen loans like this in decades. And, and when we do see them, the people decide. They make big decisions. For us, some of us unelected, walked right in, you know, unopposed, to, to not allow the respect of this community to make decisions, financial decisions, that give us really the free ride, the easiest path there is, I believe, is one of the most disrespectful things we could do to this electorate. We must be transparent. And if we haven't given you anything to say that we were gonna ran on and we walked in, you all need to decide on these major policies. And so... The mayor talks about without financing, we can't do the sidewalks. That is a lie. The charter, we voted on the charter to raise the money to four-hundred thousand dollars. And I might have to being run up a few times here and there just to prove my points. But that is a lie. We already have the money budgeted for it. We don't need the loan to do the four-hundred thousand dollars in sidewalks as the mayor projected for this loan. They're also gonna try to talk about the cost of inflation verse the interest that we're gonna pay. Well, I'm gonna show you tonight how that cost isn't much of a difference. And with all the variables that take into effect and all the help this board has, the mayor, the vice mayor, Commissioner DiDonato, not so much Commissioner Banther this, these past couple of terms. Us four have been part of the biggest budgets, the biggest gifts, the biggest grant writing in this community. We were part of a, what, a five percent, six percent property valuation? Or was it four percent? Someone tell me, I'm sure someone knows. An increase in our budget of fifteen million dollars. And yet, we're still trying to ramp things up with our city manager, who doesn't have the experience of a hundred-and-two-million-dollar budget. How does that look for our community? How does that look and reflect for our community about fiscal responsibility that our community set a precedent on? The mayor talks about how we need this money for the hurricane season. I'm here to tell you, that's a lie. We don't need it for the hurricane season. We're telling you all, we need it for capital improvement projects for inflationary purposes. So this isn't a slush fund for us. And that's why I've pushed so hard to got, try to get a referendum to this. We have runs on projects, we have outliers and situations. And I don't need staff to be the scapegoats for their expedited, you know, bill. That's not how it works. The hurricane, how did we balance the budget? I was the mayor. I mean, some of my fellow members, you know, respect their families, and I know they have to take off and take care of them. But I did stick around. I stayed in a spot in my high area, which I could look out and take care of, look out for people, and you go check the public records. I was out every place I could be to try to help out and, and make communication with our staff. How did we get through two back-to-back one-hundred-year hurricanes? How did we do it? It was because of our staff and our finance director, Ron Herring. He's probably the brightest guy in all of our staff. Loyal to the craft. Loyal to, to protecting and being smart about our money here. He got us through it. Because we were able to balance the budget from our fiscal responsibility that we've had without pulling out the reserves. And might I mention to you, the mayor at the time, when he was, was a commissioner, and so we're gonna talk about this different approach the minute we switch seats too, because I, I still don't understand how that happened. When Ron was moving money, tried to move three million from the hospital fund and move a million dollars from the, the golf course fund, in which we had every right under a state of emergency during the hurricane, it was the mayor for weeks on end that was giving Ron, our expert guru, the hardest time ever. And so a, as we sit there and talk about the hurricane, the truth about it, if we do have a hurricane, we're, we have the ability in a state of emergency to be able to move money from inner department. We have that ability. We received two-point-five million from the FEMA. We need to get the other one-point-five, the other half. But this whole misconception that, you know, and if it becomes a state of emergency, then we get to use it at our discretion. But how are we gonna borrow any more when our debt-to-service ratio has already jumped up to the middle of the ranks in the county, when, within one or two, within the first year of the note? So staff did a great job balancing the budget and proven, even the worst of times, we can get through this. I wanna talk about the city manager sent an email to us about three-fifty-six P M. I, it's really been his first explanation to this all and, and I guess a plan for it. And, you know, I'd demand to have a public workshop and a forum. People need to know what's going on. Uh, the mayor, the city manager and the mayor have to present this in a very professional way, just like, you know, as opposed to canceling the third budget and the biggest, in the biggest budget in Tarpon Springs history. And you're gonna see the questions I asked tonight, they're very serious questions. And so, even with the, even with the city manager says in these statements, what we're saying we're paying for some of these projects have already been financed, and I'm gonna prove to everybody where they put the money at causes you more money to come out of your pocket because of their capital improvement projects that they decided to expedite without proper planning. And I just need support from two commissioners on this board. You know, I get, you know, I can rub people the wrong way, but I'm passionate about this. When I found out, when I find out people's pockets are gonna be affected because we wanna rush things up after financial decisions we made and claim we're here to help the city and, and do things for this community, and I see that's not the case, I'm gonna tell you. I took an oath to this city, and I've been in that seat. I've taken the pressures of it. But I know, depending on leadership and how we go, certain situations get pushed. So I'm gonna ask the city manager at some point to address this whole matter, as well as the mayor. And then the city manager at the bottom says, as, as to the referendum, the charter is clear. To borrow funds for thirty years, we need to have a referendum. To borrow for ten years, we do not. We have a representative form of government, and the commission was elected to make the decision on behalf of the residents. How do we decide which issues go to the residents and those who show up on voting day? To decide on which decisions reside with the elected officials, the charter delineates this. We don't make it up as we go along. Well, obviously, we do have a moral obligation, city manager. And I get you come from Preston City, in this small city, and I get it, but you had a four-million-dollar budget. You come here with a hundred-and-two-million-dollar budget, and then you're pushing a twenty-million-dollar loan through, with the mayor. Once you all realize the importance of how the voters really matter in this situation, uh, I can't believe we're, we're even sticking up for that and we're, we're gonna dig our heels into something like that. It's very untransparent for this community. I think it's a cop-out. When we had the R O plan, we barely had twenty-five-hundred people vote on it. Is that not one of the biggest decisions in this community's history? When, when, you know, we, I'll go over the voting block too. That way, when they sit there and go against the scrutiny and financial reasoning you, the voters, have put through loud and clear, we're, we're not running the, the democracy we claim we're running. Okay, 'cause if we're, we're so confident in what we're saying we're gonna present in front of you today, it wouldn't be an issue. So now I'm ready to start the presentation. If someone can please go, uh, sit up there as I'm gonna bring the agenda items that I, I'm gonna fall forward with. It's gonna be the first one in which it is the one-cent local tax fund, the penny fund. And, and my job is to try to educate the public. Because the truth is, the last meeting, they got all over, they got over on me, on this. The way the verbiage was, the way the things were said, they got over on me. And I'm not sure if they, you know, maybe the commission realized what they're agreeing to. Maybe they did, but after I tell you what it is, I don't know how they can approve of something like this. So we talked about the fiscal year and, you know, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, it's the very, very first column. And at the very top, you can't see it for right now, but there is one-point-eight-seven million in there, so a little under one-point-nine. That was the money we needed to pay for the Craig Park seawall. It was already budgeted. But yet, here we are telling you all, we're financing this. We're gonna put interest on a piece, on a project we already got the financing for. Mind you, we already received a two-million-dollar grant for this year. So we're only paying one-point-six million. What our staff hasn't said, but our board should have realized and took into consideration, this hasn't gone out for bid yet. Any runs for the project, any situation that may, may cause this project to balloon up. And the truth is, this is a very monumental project. It's the start of a really great project for this community, right in the heart of it all. But yet, we wanted to do more projects. Do you know how much, you know what the city's going to look like while that's getting constructed for however long it's going to take? We should be proud of that. What was started with Mayor V is going to be finished through Mayor Kulianis. But we don't need money for it. So why do we say we need money for it? Where are we going to put the other 1.6 million? I got six million for this fire station. I got 1.6 for this, uh, Craig Park seawall. Where are we at now? We're at, what, 7.6? Never mind the interest you're going to have to pay on that as a community. So as we go down, I want people to realize our debt service. And as you see it, you'll see the Lance Boyle site for the debt service. We have to pay right now 677,000 dollars about that every year to pay off the stamis purchase. Mr. Herring, when will this fully be paid off?
Ten years.
Ten years, okay. And what was the general, I know we had, and here's another thing I'm about to tell you all about, and this is the truth. The mayor at the time, when he was a commissioner and this went through, okay, the mayor went against our finance director again. And the finance director was ready to have this off our books in five years. That was what was going on. But, the mayor insisted to stretch it out from five years to ten years. So what does that do to the penny funds? Obviously, it makes a little bit more money available next for whoever's going to lead this city for the next ten years. Imagine if you had to pay a loan off in five years and you ended up taking that seat over. Now you've got a couple more several hundred thousand dollars out the penny fund that you can't really spend money on. But by stretching it to ten years, you've allowed another 600,000 dollars. So I don't want people to get this confusion. People are very bright up here. People are very bright. People do intentional things to help set up availability for stuff. And that is one of them. Let me tell you something. When this loan, if this loan goes through without voter referendum, it is going to be terrible for this community moving forward. You know what you're going to see for ten years? Mind you, do any of you board members know what our penny revenue brings in every year about? Anybody can say it. 3.8 million dollars a year we have to play with. Once our board realizes how much money we have left over per department, they wouldn't be, they should be extra careful looking at the paybacks through those departments. You know, the mayor, and you know, that's just a metric that Ron has to go by. But you cannot compare your debt-to-service revenue across the whole city. Is the library paying the fund back? No. Is the recreation department paying the fund back? No. There's thirty-seven departments paying the fund back, but we're applying it to what, the general revenue and wherever else? But really, it's going to four departments. Golf, stormwater, sewer, penny. Read along now, everyone. So, we go to accept this loan without your guys' approval, we're going to have another line in red right there for ten years that's going to say 960,000 dollars. Debt service just from our penny funds. But the real question is, are we putting all that money into other projects or other enterprises that we may have to come out tonight? You see all these public safety stuff that's going on in the first year of fiscal '26? A lot of equipment, you know. We have to sit there and decide how we're going to start approaching this stuff. I understand we get grants for some of the first responders, vehicles, but we got to tone it down somewhere. I don't mind putting money in their pockets and I get it, but we have to come to an agreement to be more fiscally responsible in some other spots for these departments. You know? And so, as you see, we have about 1.3 million in fire. I mean, the fire department's getting everything. A hundred and fifty thousand diesel tank. One fifty mock alert fire station. Hundred and fifty grand generator. You know, they got a six million dollar building, which I'm going to go in on and I'm going to talk to you about it. And, you know, I don't care if my fellow board members go with it or not. I know what the truth is. I know where we get to where we're at when we make these decisions. If they don't want to admit it, that's just a reflection of them. You know, so as you can see, the transportation. Right at the bottom of the fiscal year, the very left column, Craig Park seawall, Elfr spur connection and the River Inview dredging design. These are all great projects. We're also, look, we got the recreation gym floor of 170,000 and I'm not sure if that actually came in from the grant that they applied for or what the difference was, but there are capital improvement projects. What are we going to do? How are we going to manage all these different accessories that we're supposed to pay out the penny fund when we literally have 1.6 to 1.8 million dollars every year for the next ten years pulled out from a fund that only brings in 3.8 million? Why should other boards suffer because this board wants to shuffle some money upfront just so they can do capital improvement projects? Because we've made decisions that have limited us in the ability to do it? Fiscal year 2027. We see we have this, down at the bottom, this Sponge Docks flood abatement. 1.5. We need more money than that. Hopefully, we get a grant to take care of it. But long story short, as we show, nothing, we have a three-year plan, they'll show you a five-year plan, but we're taking a ten-year loan. And when you see how certain years in certain departments, they barely got any projects, you wonder what's happening because it bleeds us dry. That's what happens with this loan. And if you look at the payback schedule, it ain't hard to figure that out. I want to go to the stormwater fund, because this is, we talk about the stormwater fund and how this was all, you know, we're borrowing nineteen and a half million, but we're only using three and a half million towards stormwater. You know, does anyone have a, and again, we have a five-year plan, there is no ten-year plan and there's several months that there's nothing, there's several years in which there's barely any projects. We start off with the balance, the balance ends up having somewhere between 300,000 to 400,000 dollars, okay? So, here we are. The bigger question is, how can we raise more funds for stormwater? That seems to be one of the biggest issues in this community, but yet, we've only had 300,000 to 400,000 dollars left over. That's a policy decision. That's something, you know, our experts over here on this board and our reasonable people can come up with a policy. But, that policy shouldn't be make you guys pay for the stuff we want to rush up forward. That's wrong. And I'm going to get to that. And I don't know how they're going to respond to it. So when our stormwater only has about 300,000 to 400,000 a year, okay, the payback is 400 and we're going to, you're going to see it, it's about 430,000 every year for the next ten years. So we're going to balloon up the first two years, use some leftover money to do the third, a third year, one project, okay? Put staff like Bob, who's one of the greatest people, a pressure on him and when they start pulling out run-ups and change orders, they're going to try to go to them, but they're just moving at some expedited direction and it's going to cost your guys' pockets. And I'm going to explain that. So, with the fund that only has 300,000 to 400,000 dollars left, but yet we have to take 430,000 dollars out of it every year and they're only going to spend the 3.5 to 3.7 million pretty much in the first two years, what are we going to do? Where are we going to borrow money to pay for stormwater projects between years three, four through ten? How are we going to even pull money out the penny fund when 1.6 million dollars is taken out for it for the next ten years out of a 3.8 million dollar available budget? How are we going to spread that around? And the mayor's got to get his talking points because none of this board's aware of what's going on and obviously the public doesn't know. So, they may seem right, but if staff, and our finance director's awesome, they can't show us a ten-year plan to pay for stormwater projects or if they ain't even got ten years worth of stormwater projects, why'd they rush these up when we didn't even expect to have them? And so, one of these two individuals need to take the responsibility of this loan? How they've rushed it without proper planning? How they didn't do their best to try to explain it? I mean, I'm explaining it better than you, better than him. I'm the fin, you know, I'm not the finance guy. Let's be honest. But I took the time because I care. And I want to be here to show you all, not everything we try to present for you is in the best interest. There are a lot of families out there, middle class and lower. You know what the type of rates that are going to get increased now for these projects is going to be? And you're going to have to look at some of them. So we were just doing great things for the city and expediting everything because we couldn't balance the budgets. So, I think we're done with stormwater now, right? We're going to go to the next page. Which would be the unexpected capital improvements. That's another big thing that we talk about, right? We're about to go without your approval, take on a 19.3 million dollar loan. They just changed what the projects are paid for again and, you know, as of today, they've switched around, I think, ten times? Ron doesn't even know what to present at this point. He's just got to do what y'all send him to do. And so, look at this slide. It's the very first slide. We've got the Mango Stormwater roadway improvement. Change order of about 86,000 dollars. I get it, but it's still 86,000 dollars. Hold on now. And I just, all I said is, give me five projects and let me know the results of them. And I picked a couple out. I didn't say give me all the projects. All I said is, I picked a couple that I knew and I had them produced for me, okay? The Seabreeze Drive, and that's an issue from what I understand is a little ongoing, but we'll find out about that here in the near future. We had to give the contractor 290,000 dollars on top of this, you know, it was a one-point, basically just under 2 million dollars project, ended up being just under 2.4 million. So, these are big road projects. The Mango Street Stormwater, it's a 925,000 dollar project. That's more than three or four than some of those projects that they listed for stormwater combined. And they're claiming it's going to be a dent to this community that's going to really jumpstart it all. It's not. Pango Stormwater Project. If we didn't have the ARPA funds, boy, would we be in trouble. That project was originally stated, slated for 3.2 million. And I feel so bad for those residents over there. I really do. And now the project ended up costing 2.1 million dollars more. All right? This project went from 3.2 to 5.3 million dollars. And if you go check some of the stormwater projects they got up there, they're right around the same numbers. They're in the later years, they're in years, you know, three, four and five of some of these loans, but the mayor's not going to be around for it. Some of our other board members aren't going to be around for it. Technically, we're not going to be around for it. But, where are we going to pull the money out? The penny funds? We're going to pull some out to balance, you know, this stormwater issue? So, that project, where do we find the 2.1 million dollars to pay for this gross project? Ron and his staff again, time and time again, Ron's fiscal responsibility, his ability to keep a precedent in how the city looks at its finances, was able to find money in the water and sewer fund to pay for this difference. So you may see some, why we're maybe lower in our sewer water fund, but the answer to that is not do capital improvement projects, borrow money against them and then make you guys pay for the capital improvement projects. Imagine that. So I'm slowly leading you on about this money that we claim that we're diverting and, you know, what we're really financing. Beckett Bridge, I'm bringing this up because is it on the list again? I don't, they removed it, from what I understand. They removed it again. Why? Because once I started making a stink about it, the following week, we ended up getting a grant for it, for 2.2 million dollars. You know? That's a big difference than what originally was budgeted for 5 million. So we're going to have to come up with that. But yet, or that was the wastewater treatment plant, excuse me. That was the wastewater treatment plant. The Beckett Bridge, we're taking this whole philosophy on now. We're taking this whole philosophy on. The reason we're borrowing this money is because to avoid the inflation of the projects in the near future. And you can ask any one of them. I talked to some very credible people. The Beckett Bridge situation is the biggest project. It ain't fancy. We're coming out of our pocket a lot and there ain't nothing pretty about it. We've got to move some utility lines. The expense of 4 million dollars. But, two, three years ago, that cost us 1 million dollars. And now it's up to four. So why are we claiming we're borrowing money? But yet, for the philosophy, we're clearly neglecting as we tried to present to you guys initially. What do you think that project's going to cost in a year, year and a half, two years? Is it going to go up to what, 6 million dollars at this rate? So, why can't we come together and be really representative of the people and go over a true budget with a lot of questioning and a lot of good thought? But we don't even need to do that. We just need to approve this board and go to referendum. And I'm telling you, I'm going to tighten it down for them. Because as of today, they've mixed up the projects again. Sponge Docks Abatement Flood Project, that a few years ago was sitting just under 2 million dollars. Now it's ballooned up to what, 4 to 5 million dollars? We only have the 1.6 million, but yet, that's not going to be financed in this big stormwater residence expense bill? Why? It's a big capital improvement project. So, I have big issues with how we're presenting stuff. I just, I just got the file for the Pine Street and Hibiscus intersection. You see, that's been closed for some time. It just, you know, was an emergency. The project's a little over, unexpected, 209,000 dollars. You guys might not think it's a big deal, but it is when you borrow money. You know, but the mayor won't tell you and he can tell you what you want, but he can tell like he thinks, but when you move money within your budget to pay for items you already have budgeted, you stay balanced. When you start moving money around within your budget to pay for projects with borrowed money, then you really compound things. And I don't, no one's going to say nothing on that. Also, I want to bring up another project. You all remember the Live Oak? This little Live Oak and Pine, a 36-inch sewer line broke and it costed 2.3 million dollars. Ron and his staff again had to go through it all and balance the budget and pull money out, I guess, from the water sewer fund and a couple other spots to get it right. And to pay for the gross project, we had to use the ARPA funds. So, another project, the Mayor's Extension. Remember, we used to call it Sinkhole Lane or Sinkhole Alley with all the issues that it was and that was very recent. That was a 400,000 to 600,000 dollars we had to come extra out of our pocket. How are we going to balance the budgets when we're borrowing money on projects? We don't even know the true cost of them? How safe, how safe is that to do that? So, I've just presented, just off the top of my head, literally 6 to 7 million dollars in overrun from projects that could happen unexpectedly or overrun on projects estimated and how sometimes we got to give in or they'll walk off the job. Next thing you know, we got projects sitting out there for months, like we, for years, like we did gross. If we can go to the next slide, please. It would be the proposed loan as of August 12th, 2025? Yes, sir. We'll go to proposed loan. You've heard it. And I'm just getting it on the record. I need these people, they need to see, they're going to get, they need to be presented what needs to be presented. Golf Horse Clubhouse, that, they had to throw that into the residence expense bill to try to, I guess, make me go along with it all, but it's not right. That was going to get presented by itself. That project alone in year 2025 is expected to bring 700,000 dollars in gross profit or in profit after expenses. And it's got projections of, according to what I saw, sometimes close to a million dollars. That project was going to pay for itself about five, six years or less. That project was gonna pay for itself about five, six years or less. It had no reason to be thrown in with the rest of these projects when we could've got the financing. But it was the mayor and staff, and our city manager that, you know, tried to have Ron explain that. Oh, this is a good thing. We can use that money to pay for the, for the debt service for the rest of the loan. No, we should use that money to pay for other beautiful things in this community at seven, eight hundred thousand dollars that we're making a year, but. You know, we decided to throw it in with everything else. Beckett Bridge Utilities. They are not on this list that went out and public information officers sent out on the city webpage. It's not even on here anymore. For, for months it was. So why should you all feel comfortable about us spending the money we say we're gonna spend it on? Based on the importance of these capital improvement projects and inflation when we're changing it upon you now? The only way to hold us accountable and really put this money to where we say. We're gonna do it cause it's so expensive, is a referendum. It's as common as that. Stormwater projects, like I said, I have no issue with some of them, obviously, but. Wait, when I explain to you, you're paying out of your pockets for these now. Yeah, and they haven't told you that. And that's my big issue about what we're financing and why we're, why we have to charge the residents out of their pocket. The fire station, again. They can come up here and said, we did a resolution to finance the, and to change the financing from the penny fund and, and we're gonna find, no. I was mayor, we approved the funding, I voted no against it for obvious reasons. And we approved the funding back then. I need to have our, our attorney look at our payment structure. And what we agreed upon as opposed to the mayor saying, no, we're turning this into a fixed asset so we can finance and open up all this money. Well, why don't we just tell the people we're borrowing this money, do the projects we say they're gonna do them for? Why don't we do that? Isn't that much easier? Because I believe some of our staff members don't wanna tell you that the stuff we're going to improve your lives. Makes it, makes it come out of your pocket. Craig Park Sewal, like I talked about again. Already budgeted, I approved it to you, the money was left over in the fiscal year twenty-six without financing. It's a great project. We don't know what it's really gonna cost. If we got that project done under that budget, you don't know how much of a success that would be. For not only this board, but for the community. It's the center gem of our, our town. You know, if anything, we should put all of our awareness on that one project and make sure we don't fumble it. Before we start these other stormwater projects. So, we went from ten million in the one week. And then we went up to nineteen point three million. Staff can't lie about this, I'm telling you, they just can't. And then, there was this rumor it was gonna go up to twenty-three point three million without the interest, okay? And what I, I told the public. You know, and, and some of my board members don't want me telling the public or social media, but that's my source to get my information out. Nobody would, would've known what was going on. Why wouldn't I use that to my advantage to get, to represent the community? When clearly, my other board members, you know, they can sit there and say, I stay off of it for political reasons and to avoid this and that. But you got an obligation to let people know what you're doing. It ain't easy. Just, you know, it ain't that hard to say, oh, we're gonna borrow this money, I support it. But they, most of them have been radio silent until I made them come out of the woodwork to, to really talk about it for transparency. And so. Basically what this is. It's a slush fund. If these board members do not. Want to agree to a referendum off of projects they think are the best thing for this community. Then they are clearly telling you, we're gonna move money the way we want. And they can sit there and say, oh, we're gonna stick an official to oversee everything and, you know, a lot of what. My presentations aren't planned. Some other peoples are. Alright, they pepper up their guys, you know, they sit in the office for hours, talk how they're gonna do things, not me. I come in, I get my points across, and I'm gonna approve them. Alright? So, it's a slush fund. And if we're so confident that we're doing the right thing for this community, just say what the projects are for, let them decide. It's as simple as that. For any one of us up here to act like, oh, we're here to make the decisions on behalf of the people. Yeah, we're asking you to let us borrow some money and what we're gonna spend it on. But, for us to act like we're smarter than you all and we know better. When I've seen electoral, uh, results clearly show. People voting or paying attention is beyond me. So now we're at. Um, we can go to the next page, please. The interest on the financing. You know, if I'm. If I'm the guy presenting this, and I'm not talking about Ron, you know, if I'm the mayor, the, the city manager's writing some notes down, that's good. If I'm the guy presenting this stuff, I'm gonna tell you, I'm not gonna say, oh, it's a good debt to service ratio, and we're borrowing this money at a four percent, and it's good. No, I'm gonna tell you what the actual interest is that we're paying on this. And that actual interest right now, as it looks. Four point three million dollars in interest. Do you know what that is? Over the next ten years, that's the boosted up version of the mayor's stormwater, uh, plan. That is the boosted up, you know, version of our stormwater. We lose at twenty-four million dollars, okay? We lose. Two years worth of capital improvement projects, or we just push them forward. To, to make up for all this. Because we average about nine to ten million, nine to eleven million in capital improvement. While we're borrowing twenty-four. So. You think this is spread out evenly over the next ten years like we say it is? No. They just brush it within these first two years, three years, and then we're, we're gonna sit idle for some time. Hoping we can get a proper presentation from our board members and our staff for years four, five, and throughout. And who else, and I'm about to get to the next slide too. And we'll, we'll get there at some, here we go. Our next slide is the penny and sto, basically, this is the payment plan. Has anybody showed you where the payment plan's gonna come out of? You know, did my fellow board members really look at this? I'm telling you the truth, they got over on me until I saw that third budget was canceled. Then I was like, what is going on? How dare our city manager in his first year work a twenty-time budget that's more than what he's ever dealt with, cancel our budget. While asking for this loan. It's beyond me. I, I'm telling you that. Our penny fund, the loan seven point six going into our penny fund, we get three point eight million dollars a year. So what does this do? It boosts up our penny fund for what, the first two years, then we do some projects, and then look. Ten years straight, we're pulling out the ten, the penny fund, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Mind you, plus the Stamis property, you saw that number, that six seventy, whatever it was? Here we are, pulling one point six, one point seven out of the penny fund that only has three point eight. Because the mayor and the city manager, and I hope some board members are really paying attention, want to expedite. Projects. That cost you money, instead of planning accordingly. And why is it, and this is an honest question, we say we're financing. We say we're financing, you guys better pay attention to this one. We're financing the fire station, right? But yet, all this money's being moved to water and sewer. What's going on? Why is nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars every year coming out of the penny fund to pay for water and sewer improvements constantly? It's allowed to go in every different area, but, look, some of them don't even know what's going on here, and so. We're gonna pull that type of money out. The penny fund, and not have anything left to do capital improvement projects. Stormwater, as I said, we get this three and a half million dollar loan. They've showed you the, you know, the nice little scale. No call, no bids. We don't know anything about those real, uh, construction projects. Look how much we have coming out of it each month, each year, four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. I just explained to you all, we barely even have three hundred and, three to four hundred thousand left over each year. And if you look at what's expensed over these first three years in the stormwater, there barely ain't nothing left. There's nothing. It's dried up. So the point is. Why didn't we start thinking about a policy change to start affecting our stormwater? Why did we have to. Make staff do this presentation that we're doing all these stormwater projects? But wait till I get there and see why you have to come out of your pocket, cause our mayor and our city manager wanna expedite projects. In the name of looking out for this community. And I'm telling you the truth, I don't care about some of you people that come in this community and, and I care for y'all, but when y'all talk about. Raising taxes and doing infrastructure improvements on loans that will affect the tax rate of this community. And you guys are buying seven, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar homes, do you think I care that you're paying the difference in the tax rate hike because of our irresponsibility? No, I care about those people that can barely afford the three hundred dollar hike. I have, have an obligation to look out for these people. The golf course fund. When you look at that numbers when I show you, we're gonna pull five hundred and seventeen annual debt service out of the golf fund, and we're still gonna make close to a million dollars a year. It's, I mean, it's one of the coolest things, but they have to throw that in to make it look like it's good for the rest of this bill. Water Sewer Fund, here's another one. We have other improvements that are coming really into stormwater. Or into sewer water fund, and we're gonna go over all the other improvements that have happened this year and, and the extra money that's come in and, and, and all that, so. That account has about five million dollars left over a year to do projects and capital improvement. Listen. It ain't a lot, it ain't a little. We gotta work on it, but we gotta be transparent. We're gonna sit, wait till you hear the numbers. Wait till you hear the numbers. This board was willing to, to present to you all. As if we're doing you a favor in increasing your, in doing these water and sewer projects. At the expense that you have to come out of your pocket each month. All because some of our board members expedited this. Some of us, I'm telling you. Some of us, it, it may have went over on, because when they throw all these different layers at you. And, and they throw the different departments and, you know, it's hard to peel it back, but I promise you, when you care enough. You're gonna figure it out, and I got this figured out. So you see that payback schedule? So how can we apply a debt to service ratio towards thirty-seven. Departments or whatever the general fund or general revenues is, when those are the only four paying out the debt? Also, the penny fund, and that's something we're gonna have to talk about. Uh, I may need, uh, city attorney, can you opine? Right now, we have this penny fund. In twenty twenty-nine. Uh, it's gonna go to what, a voter referendum and, and it possibly could or could not pass the one percent? Do you, can you elaborate a little bit on it?
That is correct. It'll have to go back and see if it gets approval.
Do you know what that means? If we don't get a penny fund? I don't know. I would imagine we would, but. Do you know what that means if we don't get three point eight million dollars a year in three years from now? How, where are we gonna move the money? From the six hundred and seventy thousand dollar Stamis purchase? And then, the nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar payback for ten years? From this loan that we borrowed? Where are we gonna pay for it if we don't, we don't get the money in twenty twenty-nine? Moving forward? Has anybody considered that? And that was another reason. Our finance director wanted the Stamis property off the books in five years, so it would've been done and over with. Or we would've only had one year left of payment, and he could've moved the money around to take care of the situation. So, our mayor doesn't tell you that, and I don't think our city manager even knew anyways. I don't think he was in at the time too, so it's not. On that, okay? Uh, let's go to, um, the next. We did the capital improvements, we did the proposed loan, we did the payback. We're gonna go to the department memo on this fire station. My city manager. My mayor. They can sit there and say, oh, we want, oh, we can say, we passed a resolution to, to finance the fire station. We already had it budgeted through the penny funds. Why are we, why are we telling the people we're gonna finance this project? So we can do other projects, but we can't clearly itemize the projects we wanna do? Why can't we itemize it and show the public? Hey, this money's freeing up in a clear list. As much as I support, I don't mind putting money in our fire, uh, employees and the upper management staff. I wanna take care of them financially. They got people to go home to, but at some point, we gotta recognize, we bit off more than we can chew. And some of my board members, they can fall back and say, it was greatly needed, and we had to do it, because that's really their only course of falling back. The truth is, that tied up six million dollars of capital improvement projects, and we could've done them, but. We had to have a building that, the current building is older, I get, but they have to leave under a category three hurricane, or is it a lower one now? The new one, unless I'm wrong, worse than six million dollars, and they still gotta leave under a category three. They have to go back to the E O C, so. What, they couldn't sit comfortably in that building for a few more years while we busted out six million dollars in capital improvement projects? So this board can sit there and say what they want, but our consequences. The, the decisions we make have consequences. And I, I'm not the self-proclaimed finance guy. I'm someone who looks out after this community, and once you start breaking down numbers. You see where we get to, okay? So, and I respect fire chief, but. And his job is to look out for his community, but he's also an assistant city manager. He's gotta look out the overall budget of this community. When we go present big projects such as one that he had. We are now claiming we have to rush all these projects when they weren't even presented before. And if they were so important, why were they, why were those projects not as important, if not more than this fire station? So, I don't mind, and then, as I showed you, the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven without financing. It's a, it's a first, it's an emergency response fund. I mean. We can't say yes to every red denali that the, the higher ups in the police department wanna drive. Fire, police chief drives a Taurus. Where are we gonna find ways to cut the budget? Mind you, let's not forget. We have the biggest, biggest. Uh, contract coming up with the police department, coming up with the fire union. We're talking about, who knows? Sir, if it's a minimum of those differences in, in payroll, what's your expected difference, you think, sir, uh, Mr. Herring? What do you think the expected, uh, increases in the salaries for the police and the fire? You know, on the low end.
For the first year of the contract?
Yeah. The difference.
For the first, well, it's gonna depend on, on the contract and what the percentage increases are gonna be for year one, two, and three, so that's gonna be hard to say.
Okay, then, alright. So, they're gonna try to shoot for ten percent their first year. And that's gonna be. Close. To between five hundred thousands, if not several more after that. Where are we gonna find the money? What about our fire? I wanna put money in their pockets, but we gotta start looking at other ways to shave, uh, meaningful representation. So no one's gonna say, I don't wanna finance them. I just wanna monitor some extra accessories. The golf course, we talked about the golf course, I brought it up. That was a project that was gonna get approved and brought forward anyways. It paid itself off, what, four to six years? Now we're going to the ARPA funds. You know. I'm very thankful. I'm very. I'm very thankful I was on a board that received all these gifts. Just thirteen million dollars and free money. Because I had the, the fortunate blessing of being able to serve on the board after COVID. So did my mayor. So did our vice mayor. Commissioner DiDonato maybe a couple of years. But we had the blessing to do many, many projects. We moved with financing. We use this money for emergencies like the gross, two million dollars. We use this to do so many capital improvement projects, more than what we're saying this nineteen million dollars is going for. And how we as a board cannot acknowledge that and then claim that we need more money or we're here to jumpstart or we're here to, you know, solve the water problem because we're adults. That's not the case. I've broken down so many different situations and I'll have rebuttals for them all too, believe me. Grants. This board has been part of a board that didn't have, that other boards didn't have a grant specialist. And I provided the list of all those. Even up until, we have received over five point seven million dollars in grants. At the time, this email was sent to me back in February twenty twenty-five, so this is even the most accurate number. I'm sure we've had a lot more since then because PJ, our grant writing specialist, is awesome. So this whole facade that we haven't, you know, we're in a tough spot and, but we've been peppered with financial ability left and right. It's so important just for this board to acknowledge and respect you all and your decision-making. We'll go to our next plan, please, our next slide and if we can go on the second page of that slide where it'll show the cost of inflation versus the, um, I'm sorry, Ron, you gotta come up back and forth. And I'm gonna have questions for Ron so I can rebuttal all of them afterwards. I'm just doing this presentation as I go to show it all to you, right? All right. So as you see, that, that red dot is the expected cost of inflation. The blue one is what we're gonna pay in interest no matter what. Okay? The interest we're gonna pay is four point three million dollars. The mayor didn't tell you that number. He didn't even bother to tell you what the dollar amount was this whole time. I had to request a chart from, uh, our finance guy or for, for Ron to present it. The cost of living or the cost of inflation, five point two six three million dollars. So we're looking at it about a little under a million dollar difference. Why? These guys can try to sell all they want. Why am I gonna risk money like that with what I've showed you all, how so many things change within one year to three for a million dollar difference that's gonna get sucked up in one change order? As I stated, it's safer to live within the budget as our approach as opposed to try to borrow money in the budget to pay for items we borrowed outside. And I'm also gonna tell you, you see that difference in the nine hundred thousand between the interest and the cost of inflation? How do you think they're gonna, you know, you know what that is? They're still gonna charge you all or increase your rates of the projects that they're expediting because the mayor has told you all, we're, we're jumpstarting everything, but yet we're gonna make you start paying for it right away. What is that? Come on, city. We're supposed to, if we're, if we're paying upfront for all these projects, why are we forcing you to pay a percentage of the, the expedited project? They will argue they're saving money for the cost of inflation, but they are actually inflating your rates as a citizen of this community right away to make up for their expedited projects that they decided that, you know, since the mayor became the mayor, before he was the most, you know, I don't wanna spend any dollar there is, I want everything looked at. And then the minute he became the mayor, it's, we can borrow this money now. We're in good spots. We're in good, it, it doesn't work like that. And he's gonna have to explain to himself. He gave a lot of hard time to Mayor Vaticiatus on everything, okay? And I wanna know why he's changed his tone because he's a mayor. This isn't, this isn't SimCity for our community to borrow money at your, at your expense because we wanna have legacy projects. The capital improvement lists. If you can, please pull that up, sir. I'm gonna have to ask Mr. Keiger, what are you doing this year that you couldn't do without the loan? That's what we need to figure out because the money is getting put into their account one way or another in the water sewer fund. It ain't just four million dollars. There's money left over from PFOS. There's, uh, we're borrowing money to do this meter replacement when he's gonna have to verify what these numbers are. And then we're borrowing money to do this galvanized pipe replacement. For the first two years, we're gonna borrow, are we still doing that or have we ditched that too now? We're gonna borrow money, one and a half million dollars for the first two years to start this thirty-year project, but we're gonna borrow money from you guys to start it because the mayor's got that little pipe right there and he's gonna hold it up to his eyes and he's gonna say, we gotta get it done. Well, why don't we just budget for it in year three and start it then? Why borrow three million dollars because we're just trying to give off this impression that we're starting the project now? We're the grownups. So you can pull that up and look at all you want, but you guys are still using that to charge the residents out of their pocket. And the meter replacement, there's a certain percentage of meters are already replaced. If they're gonna sit there and say, you know, we have to replace these right away, you don't need to spend two and a half million dollars this year. If a meter lasts even fifteen, twenty years, which they last longer than that, spread it out over the next five, six years. You have supposedly over half the city replaced. So I, I don't understand why we're claiming we're borrowing money to do these endeavors. That's not a big capital improvement project. Most of these aren't. The biggest one is the wastewater plant, which I wouldn't mind supporting, and the Beckett Bay Bridge. Those are the only two projects. They can come up here, everything else has been funded. But we're gonna find out the difference in these water rates and how they affect your, wait till you hear the number that's gonna have to come out of your pocket for staff to do capital improvement projects in your water and sewer to make up the difference for their projects and they're getting borrowed money. They're having over ten million dollars increase i- in the fund. And I've also brought the golf course fund up here. Ron, you don't have to go there directly, but this, this will cover the expensive bills and profits of debt service each year and they wanted to throw this in. That way they can make up for all their other slush fund money without being able to show it all because this was gonna make up their interest for the year. Look at the numbers. That's exactly what it was gonna do. And frankly, I'm willing to remove that just so we can get those six, seven million dollars of those two projects. Those are the two projects and be done with it. We'll pull the golf course fund, we'll pull that five, six months from now and I guarantee we'll get the support. Next. Next is Crescent City Budget twenty twenty-three and the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. I, I've really been disappointed from the direction of our, our mayor and our city manager. I really don't know who's running the show at this point. I, I don't know. Because when I sit there, I, I knew our city manager came from a small town doing his thing and this ain't, any of, anybody on this board tries to embarrass me about disrespect. No, the disrespect comes on you, this board. I'm here to ask tough, transparent questions for my community. You all have escaped and skirted the issue for months. And all I've wanted was true representation for this community to have voter referendum so you guys could tighten up your act and your poor planning and your dismissal of the most important historic budget in this community and how this isn't a game here in this community. The twenty twenty-one budget for the Crescent, and mind I remind you, I don't know what's going on in that city. I requested on April fourteenth the documents to have the five budget summaries of their city as well as five audit reports. And there was a question I had about a loan or grant and so I'll, I'm gonna ask it here in a second. They didn't get it to me. They, from what it seems like to me, they, they've really taken their time and their excuses. We're so busy at City Hall. There's like four or five of them at City Hall. There's like nineteen employees, you know, and so, uh, after eight, nine days, I mean, technically seven, eight business days as of today, they could not provide simple audit reports, five budget summaries for the past five years so I could see what our city manager's worked with. And when I found his first budget as a city manager, I said, okay, it sits at four point three million. The budget here in Tarpon Springs without the loan is a hundred and one, a hundred and two million dollars. That's twenty times more than what our city manager was used to dealing with. And they can try to make me look like whatever, but I know you all running your businesses and I know how I run my business. I'm not giving a Green Horn city manager in a big city, in a big city, the green light for a twenty million dollar loan on top of a hundred and two million dollar budget that was twenty times more than what he's dealt with before. And this commission is ready to go forward with that? They're not managing projects. They should have let the city manager and any fiscally conservative policy or precedent that this community had, they should have let him get his feet wet and get grounded into a, into a role he hasn't been part of. I wouldn't do that in my private life and running a business. Why would you? I didn't, I, I hired him, but the manager talks about developing our senior staff who have more experience in their respective roles than I believe he does it as a city manager and these aren't shots, these are just observations. You worry about developing them? Who's developing him? The board is supposed to. We're supposed to ease him into a budget twenty times more than what he's used to. We're supposed to let him get comfortable with things. And if the voters approve, then yeah, we'll get that loan. But to ask for something like that or to push for something like that or have the mayor force something like that through you was absolutely wrong. Cause you know why? My fellow board members know. My fellow board members know to a T. We can say what we want about Mark LaCorus, but you think mayor would have went to Mark LaCorus first day and said, hey, I need a nineteen million dollar loan? You know what Mark would have said? Go kick rocks. That's exactly what he would have said. He would have rather been fired by this board than take on a nineteen million dollar loan. This isn't a stepping stone and I told the city manager, he knows I told him this in one of our private interviews. I said, sir, I don't care if you're here for three, four years, do Tarpon Springs good. But I never expected that would come at debt to our community, nor did I ever request that. So I think we as a board need to be respectful of our residents and that we can't make, to me, it's a radical decision. Very radical. We have to be representative of them, listen to their input and help get this process guided along. The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year, there was a ten million dollar increase in the water and sewer fund. I don't know what it is. They couldn't get it, but guess what? When I put the public records request in, the finance guy went out of his way to contact our city manager and let him know about my public records request. If he had just replied, responded back to the email, it would have been done as opposed to reaching out to Charles. And then Charles had to email me saying, I don't know what this Crescent City finances have to do with the city of Tarpon Springs. Well, what they really do is show that you come from a small town and you're dealing with something twenty times more than what you're used to, sir. And frankly, I, I'm just, I'm upset that, you know, we've given you the keys to the, you know, the fastest car in Tarpon Springs and say, go open it up on US nineteen. You know, it's like, you know, the mayor talks about sports and this and that. You don't throw a rookie quarterback into the Super Bowl and in this first drive, you have him start throwing hail Marys, all right? You ease in into him. So city manager, do you know what this ten or twelve million dollar loan or grant was to the water and sewer fund back in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, the, the, uh, all the increase to that budget were grant applications, legislative appropriations and grants that we requested, so we put them in the budget.
Okay, there were nothing you had to pay back?
Correct, we didn't borrow money.
Okay. And so those average budgets, your last two years of budgets, what were you accustomed dealing with?
Well, minus those grant applications, we had about a five million dollar budget.
Okay, thank you, sir. So you understand my concern for this community? We're the CEOs. We gotta give our director a really good, safe fiscal approach for you all. The debt policy. This is how they're skirting around this whole issue and guess what? When the board was doing a CRA, uh, purchase of the Hoffman property, I wasn't even on it. I don't think, you were on it. They authorized the purchase of the property, but they wanted to go to voter referendum. They didn't have to go to voter referendum from the CRA, but they did it for the transparency of the community. And the community voted on it. So there's a difference, this is the court of public opinion. And we're, we're not allowing you all to be involved in the biggest decision-making without true overseeing everything. How is that transparent? How is that transparent? So under the authority to issue bonds, it says, City of Tarpon Springs, section three limitation of powers requires a referendum ratified by a majority of the electorate before any contract is executed by the city for a period greater than ten years. That's how they're skating by. They can call it ten years in a day and you all would have a decision. You all would have a voice. But this mayor and this city manager obviously feel the charter is morally sound for them and guess what? We just had a charter revision committee and I'm gonna bring a charter question forward because obviously they overlooked this, but there's so many things to look at. So it's not necessarily reflection of them, but we obviously picked up on something. And for us to go ask for money like this without voter approval is an absolute shame. You know, the mayor talks about this is, I'll die on this hill. No, you won't. The people will let you decide to die on this hill. You, you are not the king. You need to face these people and you need to tell them and articulate from every aspect because at this point, I've outshown you in your financing with this auditing, what's going on, why you think you deserve the money for this community to take on without their approval and why the city manager decided he was gonna push this through him just so, I don't know, if it's just some resume padding or, or whatever. And if it's my, my opinion, I wanna ask the city attorney, no matter what they say, contract or not, we're purchasing something. We're purchasing money at a higher rate. And if that doesn't require voter referendum, I don't know what's going on. Let's go to past elections. And I wanna bring this up, the stammas property. We gave it to the voters. I didn't even support it. It was time to pick an election. They, they voted. Eighty-six hundred said yes, forty-four hundred said no. So regardless how you feel about the appraisal of the property, remember it was the mayor made sure we want to extend it ten years, open up some more money for him instead of having it five years as our finance guy had it set. That went through, and guess what? It was time to pick a bond company. It was time to move forward. And the mayor who had set up the financing for this was ready to go against the whole agenda item that the residents voted for. And, and, you know, I guess he and maybe some others, you know, I don't know what they were thinking, but they almost outsmarted, you know, this board in a way. It was a very good tactic, but I remembered that I had the ability to pass the gavel and create a second motion. And we ended up letting that happen. So what happened when we have a board that's willing to go against the will of the people? From a referendum? It's a very scary situation. And I was very thankful and blessed. I was able to get to my board members, including the mayor to come agree to this. Cause we were just fulfilling the will of the people. But I don't know what would have happened if we didn't do it. What would it have done? Would it freed up five and a half million dollars for potentially the mayor? Cause he was a mayor-elect at the time to be able to play with? That's, that's exactly what it was. He was willing to go against the will of the people on that. Your husband voted yes for it, ma'am, so anyways, long story short, at times you can't really trust this board. If, if we're not willing to look out for the will of the people and do what you guys tell us to do, how are we really representing you? And we need a referendum for this. There's no doubt about it. I've showed you how all this has been hodgepodge together. How wait till I get to the rates. This is the best part about it. So the residents said yes to the Stamos property. The mayor is ready to go against it. It would obviously freed up more money for his tenure to do projects. The, the threshold for real property, the residents said no. We want to vote on three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, no more than that. If you raise it to five hundred, they said, no. You're telling me twenty percent of the electoral vote are wrong? Are they not fiscally responsible? Cause they said, no, we want to vote on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar property. But yet they don't want you to vote on a nineteen point three million dollar loan. The residents now. The authority for the, the board to increase funds from twenty-five to fifty without competitive bidding. Okay? For that the city could do that. The residents voted no. For twenty-five thousand dollars. Overwhelming. What, you know, these referendums are put in a situation, you think people are going there and just put yes? It's a clear sign they don't. It's a clear sign that twenty people look at the item, had the fiscal common sense to say, we want more transparent observations. I hope some people out there understand, no matter if it's twenty percent, ten percent or a hundred percent, it's better than five board members just saying, we're gonna do what we want. They did the same thing with the city manager's purchasing power. They limited it from twenty-five when the charter tried to increase it to fifty. That's twenty-five thousand dollars. You don't think they want to vote on this? It's common sense. And anybody skirting this issue, it's got something they're hiding. Cause y'all don't know better than the residents. None of us collectively up here. The R O plan, the biggest, you know, this R O plan we talk about. Tarpon Springs residents to issue revenue bonds not exceeding forty-five million dollars. One or more series maturing within thirty years bearing interest to purchase the R O plan and all that. The vote was just under fifteen hundred for the bond and just under six hundred for the bond. Do you think it matters that twenty-five percent voted on this in the general population? You know, some people try to skirt around that, oh, it doesn't matter who, you know, we don't get enough people. The people that go care enough to vote. I, how can you convince someone otherwise? And guess what? A forty-five million dollar loan divided by thirty million, thirty years is a lot less per year than a nineteen point three million dollar loan over ten years. We can do the numbers all we want. But according to some people up here, they don't want you to vote. The biggest elephant in the room. The biggest elephant in the room. Is these stormwater sewer improvements, how we're budgeting all this extra great stuff to look out for the community. But in reality, we're making you pay the interest on everything and we're gonna tax you now for these projects right away. This isn't a yearly water rate increase. The increases they come forward in front of you all is because of the capital improvement projects they've hid from showing you what they're doing from the financing of the fire station, the Craig Park seawall, and a few other things. For some reason, they diverted some extra funds or there's extra funds available in that water sewer fund that allows this extra increases, and then they come in front of us and say, well, we gotta reach this and this percentage increase. And we got, it wasn't until a few days ago, we have to do those percentage increases to make up for the difference in the expedited capital improvement projects we're pushing through the water and sewer fund. That's what we're doing. I, I don't, does this board know that? I really didn't catch that until I made that. And guess what? The board has to accept a seven dollar increase with the financing to do projects. Our, a few of these board members are expediting for water, minimum for the financing. If we didn't do the financing, they would want twenty-one dollars a month extra per household. Why? Because some people want to expedite capital improvement projects for their legacies. Well, why don't we budget accordingly? Why don't we have respect for our penny fund? Why don't we understand that we have to make, create policy issues to help create more money in the stormwater? Instead of just say, we're gonna shuffle money within a ten-year period, that way we can starve the backend of it. How is it fair, representative to you, they're, they're saying they're funding all these big capital improvement projects that have been funded, but it's really diverting money towards stormwater issues to raise, we'll get to that rate, and the water and sewer fund from the capital improvement. So no matter what, because of our mayor and the city manager trying to expedite these projects, they have forced an inflation on you instantly as opposed to us as a city adapting to the cost of inflation as we go along. They can't run from that. They cannot run from that. And yet they don't want you to vote on this. Cause you, you didn't know about it. I knew about this two, three days ago. You know how much more education we'll get out there for this community? They're afraid that you all know too much and y'all can make good decisions on your own. So as Tommy and them try to present these numbers, there's a break even point just to pay for the cost of the construction projects. But then there's the numbers above with the financing, which is seven dollars, I believe, and then without it, twenty-one dollars. What are we doing? The stormwater, we're doing all these projects to speed up the stormwater. Your stormwater rate, we're done with the ten-year period. We're supposed to come up in front and improve everybody for another ten-year period. What are we doing now? We came up and told you all, we have to increase the stormwater two dollars and fifty cents, and I'm gonna show you the piece, the paper. And that wasn't proposed budget CIP financing. Makes it possible to accomplish the stormwater action plan projects while keeping the stormwater rate increases at a minimum of two fifty per month instead of six dollars per month based on the study still in progress without financing. We're charging you now per month for these capital improvement projects. That's where the extra interest is, that's gonna come bear out of these accounts, each department. The water, you know, and if we didn't get the financing for the stormwater, it'd go from two fifty a month to six dollars a month per household. So no matter what, they're gonna borrow loan money. They're gonna say they're financing projects that we already had budgeted. They're gonna divert or slush it around into water and sewer, cause you don't see the itemized list. And then on top of it, you're forced to pay an extra nine dollars a month for expedited projects that we could have budgeted at someone's expense up here. So I'm here to be transparent. I go to sleep good at night telling it like it is. And if I have to bring up Ron to go over every item, I'm gonna do it. And it puts Ron in a bad spot, cause he's forced to go through policies that in my heart, I can't speak for him, he don't necessarily agree with. And I think it's shameful. I think it's shameful that we are asking for a loan like this in this man's final year. No one can move money around. You think you're gonna replace him like that? And, and you all irresponsibly want to take out a loan without the people's will? When our guru isn't gonna be around? Y'all have stressed this man out to the point, I know it. That's my opinion. So staff has a lot of explanation to do for itemized budget. They need to, without a doubt, we've proven, and I'll bring people to rebuttal everybody's stuff, I promise you. I'll be writing the notes now. There's no doubt, community, this needs to go to referendum. I've explained top to bottom, ins and outs, layers of this, layers of this situation you had never been exposed to or familiar with. And, and telling, I'm telling you the truth, our staff members, I felt like kept it that way. And so shortly I'm gonna end my presentation. These men better articulate, and I'm hoping they support common sense and true representation of the city. And that way we can prove to the people, your decisions you make have consequences. You know, what these people do, they, they made fun of somebody, a past, you know, individual on the board for reducing the water rates. They did that. But these guys are the same guys that approved projects that have led us to where we can barely spend money. So what's the difference? You know, so I'm asking this commission, no matter how mad you may be at me, do the right thing for this community. Let it go to referendum. Let's let the city manager actually have a third budget and he can articulate how he's gonna have a five-year plan. Cause he's really only got a three-year plan, and they could sit there and say five, but I don't see the money going everywhere. And a true plan is a ten-year plan, cause we're borrowing ten years worth of money. And we're gonna strip the penny fund and really suck it dry and lose forty to fifty percent of its revenues over the ten years, cause the mayor wants to do some projects that unfortunately he should have budgeted for in staff. And so this commission needs to be transparent for the community. Don't skirt around the ten-year. Let the people have a voice. And we'll be fine, and you're gonna be happy if they approve a loan for what you specify it for. We're gonna feel happy, but for you guys to create a slush fund is wrong. And I've proven, week after week, y'all keep changing the priorities of everything, so there's really no trust. The only way to trust this board is to have the citizens hold you to a referendum to spend the money. And you got the email from Mayor V, and it was sound. But any checks in place need to happen after a voter referendum. And if we have some of the best, you know, finance auditing people that are on this board, well, let's prove it and, and let's work instead of borrowing money for this community without the people's will. So I want to thank everyone. I have plenty of rebuttal when I go to pick, pick off anything that doesn't make sense for this community. And I'm just asking for the right thing. I'm asking the right thing for this community, so we're willing to go for the people. And I'm happy I was actually have, the people have their public comments or after I have to say what I have to say. Because charging the residents and deceiving, we are deceiving you all by saying we're doing water and sewer and stormwater, but your rates are just naturally going up. No, we have to put them up for these capital improvement projects. Y'all didn't know that. I don't even think some people in, up on this board knew that. So how can y'all get taxed on the front end during the whole time and on the back end? It's just, it's not transparent for this community. So I want to thank you all for giving the opportunity to speak, be thorough as possible. I know I've dissected this whole issue, you know, but I'm just hoping we get some people to support the residents' wishes. Thank you all.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to, um, we're gonna go to commissioner, all the, the other four commissioners can, can comment. I'll start this off. I'd like Ron and Tommy, if you guys can come up. Okay, so Ron, when you first put the original draft of the budget together without the increased financing, how much was left in the penny fund? After that budget?
We run about two hundred thousand dollars in the penny fund.
And I asked you the question, is, is that a comfortable amount to cover contingencies?
No.
No, okay. So I assume that, well, let's talk, let's continue to talk about that first, that first budget without the increased financing. I assume it included the fire station seventy, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that is already into, under, it's the, the, the site plan, site work has been done and it's getting ready for construction, correct?
Yeah, construction has started.
Okay. Was the Craig Park seawall construction phase one in that original budget?
Yes.
Okay, for one point six million?
Yeah.
And we know, obviously, we know the importance of that, cause it's underwater daily and it, it's actually, the sidewalk's actually collapsing. So we know that that's a priority. The golf course clubhouse, four point two million, was that in the original budget?
Correct.
Okay, and in that original budget, the, the clubhouse, which is a enterprise fund, it's not coming out of the penny fund.
Correct.
Right? So not all that debt service is coming out of the penny fund?
Correct.
Okay, and that was an enterprise fund, and you, in that original budget, you had that financed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that was always originally, always intended to be funded by financing?
Correct.
And it would have been paid for by operations of which, you know, Tommy's done some great projections and it should be able to pay for itself. And, and be able, and, and there's nothing that stops that, that fund, that enterprise fund from accelerating payments, what, after eighteen months, we, there's no prepayment penalty on this, on this loan, correct?
On the golf course loan?
No, on the ten-year financing.
Oh, for the land site?
No, the ten-year financing on, on the, on the golf course. You, you said, what?
We don't know yet.
Yeah, we won't know until we go out to bid.
No, but you, what I'm saying is, in your original budget, you had four point two million for the clubhouse and you assumed it was gonna get financed?
Correct.
Okay. And that financing you had assumed was a ten-year financing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the, the, like the Stamos property, we got the ten-year financing.
Correct.
Which, you know, I wasn't, again, like, like the commissioner said, I wasn't king. I wouldn't even, I wasn't even the mayor then. I wouldn't even, I wasn't even the mayor then, and everyone voted for it, I believe. So, so the, so that Stanis property, that ten-year, had a, had an eighteen-month prepay, prepayment?
Correct, we looked for one of the lowest prepayments.
After eighteen months, we could prepay it.
In July of two thousand twenty-six, we can pay it off.
Okay, so, so again, the golf course clubhouse already had financing, it's always been intended to be financed?
Correct.
Okay. The wastewater treatment plant electrical units, that was for, for four million dollars. That was also financed in your, in your budget plan, right? The original budget?
Original budget, correct.
Okay, so again, that was always intended. So right there is, so right there is eight point two million of, which was already intended to be financed, so this is not additional financing, that was, that was an intent to be financed from, from this, from the get-go. Did your original plan that had, that didn't have the increased financing, that's why I use the word increased financing, it wasn't a budget with no financing and a budget with financing, it's a budget with increased financing, because it had financing already imputed in it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So did it include any stormwater projects, the original budget?
No.
Okay, no stormwater projects, okay. So we're addressing, again, I think that, I've seen some surveys, actually, Ms. Weaver shared one with me, that stormwater was the number one issue that the residents, that how are we gonna address the, the perpetual flooding that goes on in, in Tarpon Springs? Flooding that goes on, I mean, we had a one-hour rain, and, and I, I was, I've been, I've been fighting a little something, I was home, and the reporter who, from Action News that wanted to see me, actually had to come over to my, to my house, I just asked him to come on over to my house. So when he came over to my house, he had to figure out, he had, he said, oh, I'm sorry, I'm late, I had to U-turn a couple places because there was water in, in, in the streets. So, and that was like, what about a one-hour rain? So obviously, addressing stormwater is, is important. Did your original budget have anything for bayou and river dredging?
No.
It had nothing, okay. And we have, the vice mayor could speak that we need to, to address the river dredging, okay? And, and your original budget without the increased financing, not no financing, couldn't address stormwater, and it couldn't address the bayou river dredging. Okay, let's go back to, if we have no financing, if, if we do this, and you, your words were, what were your, what were those words you liked to use? You said?
Running on empty.
Yeah, running on empty, pay-as-you-go, running on empty.
Living on the edge, you know?
Living on the edge is another one, that was a good one, too. So that, let's talk about the wastewater electrical units, okay? If we did not finance that, okay, and had to pay cash for that, and we didn't stretch that electrical panels out, and we'll talk about the, the importance of those panels, then you calculated that instead of a seven-dollar increase in water and sewer rates, it would go to twenty-one, correct?
Yes, if that's, that's the all, all no-debt scenario we looked at in the, the rate model, it would require like a twenty-three percent rating.
Because if we avoid debt completely, the residents will pay immediately for not having that debt, they're gonna pay, they're gonna go, they're, they're gonna have a twenty-one dollar increase in their, in their, they're gonna go from seven dollars, that it's being increased now on, with just the inflationary things that we have, and it'll go to twenty-one dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, if we don't do the, if we don't finance that electrical panel, let's talk about how important that electrical panel is. So, and you, you correct me if I'm wrong, please. Okay. Those, that electrical panels that are across the street at the sewer plant are, right now, let me ask you, when, when were we told that they were becoming obsolete?
That was first identified in an engineering report in two thousand eight.
So two thousand eight, so seventeen years ago, we were told those, those panels are near obsolescence, right?
We were told they had five to ten years of remaining life, that we need to plan for replacement.
So, and when we had Hurricane Helene, what, and you, and you confirm if I'm wrong, that we were within eighteen inches of saltwater saturating into those panels?
There, we were very concerned, and that we were within a, you know, a foot and a half, couple feet of having storm surge potentially impact the electrical systems, yes.
Okay. So if, if water, if saltwater got into that panel, that panel unit, give me the scenario, what could happen?
This, this is a very critical, like, relatively high-risk asset for us, because it's in a low-lying area, and the electrical panels are below the hundred-year flood elevation. So when we did our vulnerability assessment?
And what would happen if saltwater gets in there?
Yeah, if saltwater gets in, we could have a scenario where only about a third of the city is inundated, but it would knock out wastewater service to the whole town.
Okay, and if it knocks out wastewater service to the whole town, that means when you flush your toilet and fecal matter is in your toilet, it's going straight into the river?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
That's why we wanna do the project.
And how long would it take to fix those, to get those panels up, given that their, their age that they are right now?
That's, that's really difficult to assess, it would be at, at the minimum of quite a number of weeks, probably months, because the panels, the, the existing electrical equipment is no longer available on the open market, so we would have to build a whole new system from scratch.
So you're talking about, we could go months with, if, again, if, if we had had, if Milton had have been ten miles closer to us, that would, because we were, what, what were we estimating on Milton with the, what were we estimating?
For the height of the water? All the hurricane storm surges kinda run together, but if we did have a major storm surge right now, the, the electrical systems are at risk of, of being inundated and being out of service for a very extended period of time.
Okay, and you're talking about two months of, of waste from the, everyone's toilets going into the, into the Inklow River? If those, how important those, no, let's not, let's not make light of how important those panels are. They're critical, right?
It's important enough that when we did our citywide vulnerability assessment, this was identified as the most critical infrastructure to elevate and harden in the whole city.
The most critical infrastructure, what did you say?
In the whole city, of all critical assets.
In the entire city?
Yeah.
Okay. We have no choice but to address those panels and get them replaced and get them elevated properly. We, if, if, let me ask you, if we know, if we've known now since two thousand eight that those panels were, were near obsolescence, we've known, we know the elevation of those panels, if we had have had a storm and the whole city went out of, and, and all, and our wastewater shuts down, and we have this ecological crisis of, of all this sewage going into the, to the river for possibly a couple months, what, what's the ramifications towards our city?
Nothing good, so you're, you're looking at serious pollution concerns in the Inklow River, and also you're at a pretty high risk for enforcement by FDP, potentially getting a consent order, being subject to regulatory action that would require suspend money to harden our assets and improve our wastewater facilities as a permit condition moving forward with the Department of Environmental Protection.
We'd be seriously fined.
We'd have some.
In addition to just having our, our, our river be a, a complete mess?
Yeah.
And fined, and fined heavily. Okay, so it's important. So explain to us the, and we, we had a talk about this today, explain the necessity for the meter repair and replacement. Why do you feel like, why do you feel like that needs to be expedited?
So the, the goal of that project is revenue recovery, and so that project exists to generate, right now, let me back up, so residential meters, over time, they tend to slow down, which means they don't capture all the water that's being used by the customer, which results in lost revenue. And so when you lose revenue, you have to raise rates to make up for that, right? So this was an important thing that we put into the financial plan to reduce the level of rate increases that would be required to balance the books long-term. So by investing in a project that will self-fund and generate new revenues without, with, without increasing water rates, we're able to help improve affordability and improve the financial of the utility.
Let's, let me go back to a Ron question. How much did we spend in cleanup after Hurricane Helene?
Well, total, we were at ten million, that's the debris removal, about eight million, and overtime, and all supplies, about ten million total.
And is most of that to be reimbursed?
We, yeah, we're still waiting on seven point five million, we received two point five million.
So a year later, we spent ten million, and we are, we got reimbursed two point five million, and we're still waiting for seven and a half million dollars?
Correct.
Okay. If God forbid, we had another such storm this year or even next summer, where would you find the funds to cover ten million dollars upfront, as we did there, if you had to pay every capital project currently in cash? Where would you find, where would you find the money for that?
Well, if we didn't have our FEMA reimbursement, yeah, the seven and a half million?
Let's assume, no.
Yeah, well, we'd have to start dipping into our reserves and the general fund.
Okay, and how much do we have in the reserve?
Nine million dollars.
Okay.
Other than that, you can also go out for financing to cover FEMA until you get the reimbursement.
Well, yeah, but we don't, we don't want to have, get down to where we've depleted all of our reserves, right?
Correct.
Okay, but it, it could happen, and, and, and we had an example of that last year. Okay, so with financing, show us the effects, because you, I know you have some slide stuff, show us the effects of additional projects that can be completed if we do the financing.
These are the public safety projects, but I don't think that's what, you wanted to get more of the stormwater projects, but these are the stormwater projects, six point three million over the five years that could be accomplished with the financing.
If we didn't do financing, how many stormwater projects can we address?
None.
None. Okay. So. How many street repairs can we do if, and again, just remember, just remember, th, th, this is getting, I think this is getting hugely blown out of proportion. We had, the, we already, we all agree, I think everyone up here agrees, that the golf course can handle its own financing, it can cover the finance, and, and it has, and there's nothing that stops it from early paying, if it wants to clear it up anytime it wants, it can do it, accelerate as much as it wants. But we know that it, it can cover itself. We know, I, I think everybody who would listen, and we, and this isn't the first time we talked about this stuff, so, you know, I take exception that, that, oh, we're, you know, this is all some kind of shell game or something. We've had, how many, everything that I've learned about all these projects, I've learned through these, these forums, you know, of, of, we, every, every single one of us had an individual meeting with, with Tommy and, and Ron to go over all of the utility issues and all the, the things that we had to deal with there, so, and, you know, so let's. So again, we're talking about, let's, how, how many streets can we do if we do the financing?
If we do the financing over the five years from two thousand twenty-six, two thousand thirty, we're looking at five point two million of street projects.
And again, when we're talking financing, all we're talking about really is, is freeing up that money that was set aside for the golf course, I mean, for the fire station, finance the fire station, finance, what's the other thing we're financing? The Craig Park seawall.
Yeah.
So that frees us up seven point six million dollars. That's what we're talking about, getting these projects done, right? So we're only talking about seven point six million, we're not talking about nineteen million, because the ninth, the others were already getting financed, that was already an agreed-upon situation. So we have, we can, we can approach streets, you know, who likes driving right now on, on any of these streets, like, for example, Orange Street, which I know most of that's gonna come from the CRA?
Correct.
But then we've got the streets, we've got Roosevelt, which is super critical, and that's what, mostly a stormwater project, because that's the only, we bought, we bought one point eight acres of property on Roosevelt, and we've got a street that you can't even go down pretty much any day, because of, as soon as high tide comes, it's underwater. So we've got to address these things, and we did those, we did those over on Martin Luther King, right? When, when we did the Martin Luther King project, I think it was done with ARPA money, and I appreciate the, the commissioner giving me credit for some of the ARPA things, but I don't think I would, that was your first year, you guys made most of those decisions, but, you know, I.
You were the sixth commissioner, sir.
Was I?
Go check the record.
I was the sixth commissioner?
Yeah, you were all up in our business the minute you became Commissioner Lex, sir.
All right, cool. All right, I didn't know there was six, but you, you, you talked about a sixth one, remember?
We still have a sixth commissioner.
Yeah, yeah, all right. So mysterious sixth commissioner. So the. All right, so we're, we're talking about what we could, what we could get done if we free up the fire station money and the Craig Park seawall money, use the, use borrowed money to cover those, and then we would have, we'd be able to do these things, we'll do, get into more stormwater things, it frees up enough for us to take on projects that we know the residents are concerned about, all of us are concerned about, and, and so that, that's where we are with that. Okay, we explained the necessity, okay, so. So I already asked you to show us the stormwater, I asked you to show us the street repairs. What, what is the interest rate on the loan? If, I, I know you.
Oh, what we're, what we're planning on?
Yeah.
Four percent.
Four percent. What is the, what's the interest rate we receive on our savings in the state of Florida pool fund?
Currently about four point four six.
Okay, so we're receiving more money in our, in our state pool fund than we're paying?
We're invested in.
Which is, you know, really unheard of, I, I can't, I can't imagine anybody in business that has, that gets that opportunity. You normally would pay more for borrowed money than you would for saving money, we're in a unique position that we have that opportunity. Did you do, okay, you showed your inflation versus interest cost analysis, the commissioner asked you to put that one up. The, you know, and the commissioner made a lot of examples, which I, I appreciate, of runaway inflation, right? Like, oh, we, we, we estimated this project to be this, and it ended up costing us that. Well, yeah, that, I mean, that's really one of the reasons to, to expedite projects is to beat runaway inflation, we get, we get to buy it, we get to spend this, this money now. Again, we have a hundred million dollar budget, and we're talking about, what, seven point six million bucks, I think, above and beyond what was already agreed upon, or what was already intended to be financed. So. So also, let's go to, when we look at the, when we look at, let me ask you a couple more questions. Before I get into debt ratios. What, Ron, you have a slide that shows the, what we've spent normally in capital projects, right? Okay, so over the last five fiscal years, we have averaged $12 million in capital projects.
Per year?
Yeah, per year. With a five-year total of 61,000, 61 million, if we take out ARPA money, that means it was a natural 9.6 million a year, which seemed to be in, over a five-year period, which was kind of an average of what was the capital projects that needed to be paid for during those fiscal years.
Correct.
Okay. What do we have in this budget? What do we have in this budget?
The 37.1 million?
37.1 million.
Correct.
So the 37.1 million, we know we have the 19 million that are the listed projects, which there's not a vanity project in there, other than the golf course, but it pays for itself, which is probably, that's the best deal we got. So where are all these other projects?
Most of them are in the Water and Sewer Fund, some other capital projects in the Penny Fund. You've got the CRA Fund with the Orange Street construction, or just the bulk of them.
So we just have an unusual amount of projects that are, you know, are coming upon us in this one year, right?
Correct.
Okay. And to try to pay them, you know, as you go, and as you say, is getting us close to running on empty. So, yeah, I do like the pipes. I like showing the pipes. Let's look at the pipes. And there's a reason for this. If you guys look through this pipe right here, this pipe is a water pipe that was taken just a, what, about a year ago from, on Martin Luther King, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you can see the amount of corrosion that's in that pipe, and how much, this is, this is a water pipe. These are galvanized pipes. How many miles of galvanized pipes do we have right now in, under the ground?
Probably 11 or 12.
11 or 12 miles with the galvanized pipes. And these pipes are pretty much limited to, and here's the big one. And so that's a big water pipe, and you can see what's in there. It's just an example, I didn't pick this, I didn't go out and cherry pick it. But it's, so, Ron, I got a real good question for you. Come on back. So Ron, tell the residents, everyone listening, and the people in the audience, and this board, about the referendum that was held back in around 2005 that dealt with these pipes.
Yes, there was a referendum that was passed by the voters approving 18 million for water and sewer capital projects with a term no more than 20 years.
Okay, so that went to, that did go to referendum because it was a loan of over 20, of over 10 years. And this was 20 years ago. 20 years ago, they knew these pipes were nasty, right? Because even the voters, then the voters voted, and that, most of that 18 million was to go towards getting these pipes replaced. That's correct.
Correct.
I know. So now, when we talk about, like, okay, do you want to, you want to wait three more years to maybe make some investment into getting these pipes fixed? Because it's going to be a long-term plan. This is going to take a long time. There's 12 miles worth of pipes. Even if we had the money to do them all in one week, we would shut this city down. These pipes are in Greertown, they're where we're sitting now, they are in Union Academy neighborhood, they're uptown, they're in the Fruit Bowl district. Any of these older areas have these disgusting pipes. I, like I said at the workshop meeting where we talked about these, my office is right down the street, Orange and Ring. I could not use the water to make even coffee. It was disgusting. I couldn't, at least once a week, we had to get the plunger out because the toilets couldn't handle flushing. It's what it was. Okay, so addressing this is going to be important. Now, understand that all these things we're talking about is, these are, this financing, and again, you know, I understand that, you know, the Commissioner likes to use inflammatory things and talks, and impunes emotives and all that stuff. I get it, it's not my first time at the rodeo. So, but, you know, when we talk about that I'm doing this stuff for, when he makes comments like, "I'm doing this stuff for legacy", I mean, do I want to leave, do I want to leave here in three years and say that I had, that I was part of a board that got some things done? Absolutely. But let me tell you, we got a couple mayors and former mayors in the audience, and I don't know who the mayor was when Siskel Field was built. I don't know who the mayor was when the sports complex was made. It might, it could have been the gentleman down at the end. I don't know who any of these guys are, and nobody does. And they're forgotten. I know I'll be forgotten, we're all going to be forgotten. If you think this is, if you think this is, you're going to get immortalized here, you're, it's foolish. My brother, you know, was mayor 38 years ago, and he still has to buy his own coffee at Dunkin' Donuts, they don't even give it to him for free. So, you know, it's not, this has absolutely nothing to do with legacy. This has to do with making some sound fiscal responsible decisions. Let me ask you, Ron, and the Commissioner, you know, gave you his praise, and I always do as well. How many years have you worked in the finance department of this city?
You're going to ask that again?
I'm asking it again.
39 years today.
39. And you started when? And you started when my brother was mayor?
Correct.
You came in with a cool house, and you said you're leaving with one. So that's awesome. But how long have you worked as a finance director?
12 years.
12 years. Are you a conservative person?
Yes.
I know you are. Are you the one that has the daily anxiety about how things will get paid for?
Constantly.
Nobody in this town, nobody in this, no one here, nobody on this board, nobody in this building has the, the guy who has to balance the books and has to make the bill payments, you have the most anxiety on a daily basis of handling the cash flow of this town.
That's why I run so much.
All right. I'm going to ask you a question. Are you more comfortable? And let's, again, let's clear something up. Do I come in and browbeat you?
Just over my running.
Just over your running. Do I browbeat you about your job?
No.
Okay. So, and most of the time, it's you educating me, not me coming in and educating you. You know a heck of a lot more about fund accounting, that's what this is called when you, in municipal accounting. He knows a heck of a lot more about it than I will ever know. And are you more, now here's the question again. Are you more comfortable, from a financial security perspective, with a no-financing budget approach to this fiscal year? Or, here's the B, you can answer A or B. Or B, do you feel more comfortable, from a financial security perspective, with this, the budget as we have, as you were instructed on a four-to-one vote to include financing? Do you feel more comfortable with that budget than you did that first budget you did?
Correct, there's more financial security with option B.
Okay. So, and first of all, like the Commissioner said, you can walk out of here at any time. Nobody intimidates you, and nobody puts any words in your mouth. I know that, you, because you, I know that. It's not like you're some, you know, 30-something-year-old guy that the mayor comes in and says, "Hey, I need you to make these numbers work, because this is what I want." First of all, I've never done that with you, and I've never done that with you, and you couldn't be had like that.
No, we've got a code of ethics we have to follow and compliance standards, and we have external auditors that also come in, but it's the ethics of it.
Okay, so following up on that, on that thought, you have to run all these budgetary decisions by our financial people too, right? Because we have outside financial people like?
Well, correct, and part of the debt policy also. But anytime we're doing something with debt, I'm on the phone with our bond counsel and financial advisor and running it by them.
And the bond counsel would be the ones who would tell us if we did anything that would create any rating issues with us, right?
Correct, also our rate consultants.
Okay. So let's go back to the rates again. So when we look at the, the ratio that we, that we see as the number, the biggest predictor towards any kind of a debt issue is our debt service to our general revenue, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the one we always, that's the one we always peg. So, yeah, if you go to your chart. Okay, so with our debt ratio to our general fund, not the debt ratio to everything, that's not what I'm saying, because it would be a way smaller percentage if it was everything. It's just debt ratio to our general fund. Our, and ours is 4.1%. The average of Pinellas County is 4.63%.
The 4.1 is if we do the financing.
Yeah, if we do the financing, as the budget is right now. This budget's already, is, this is the budget you've been working with.
Correct.
Tonight, we're not debating whether we're moving forward with debt service. What we're debating is, and the Commissioner took it there, that we're debating the merits of financing. So, and then we'll get to the other part. But right now, we have two issues on the table. One is the merit of financing, and then is whether it needs to go to referendum or not. So if you look at, if you look at, right now, we have, we have, we're at 4.1%. And if you see that as, so your general revenue, like, what is the percentage of increase that you are using in your model?
Those are the orange bars, and it's an average of 5% has been historically. So yes, it's a 5% increase per year.
And you did, you determined 5% by going back?
Historically, the general government revenues.
So historically, the general fund will grow, the debt service percentage keeps dropping. It drops precipitously down in about, what, three, four years? It drops down. So we're talking about a small sliver. And again, just as a point of reference, Dunedin was what, 12%?
They're up at 12.2%.
They're at 12.2% is their debt service to general revenue. And then what was Newport Ritchie?
They were right around the same, about 12%.
12%. So we are considerably lower than them, and we pay down debt really fast.
Correct, with the 10 years. It's basically paid off by 2036.
And again, we get to deal with, and all we're really talking about, really what we're really talking about is freeing up the fire station money to go towards these things and some of the seawall money. So let's look at, okay, so I had a meeting with you and the city manager and Mr. Pulos. And we talked about, is he here?
He's in the back.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hey, Billy, come on up.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Hey, Billy. So we had, we had that meeting, and we talked about a mechanism that would assure the board and that would assure also the residents that whatever we were borrowing was used specifically for the purpose it was borrowed for, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so what we would do is we would, and again, it has to be approved by the board, but I would hope, I think it's pretty straightforward, that we would open a State of Florida pool fund. We would go to the pool fund where we get the 4.46%, whatever. We would go to the pool fund, we would deposit the loan money. What you would do is you would, we would, you'd create some kind of a report showing us, okay, if $6 million is supposed to go to the fire station, that you would examine all the invoices that pulled from that money. So Ron would have to, what Ron's going to have to do is he's going to wire money out of there into whatever account he needs to, to then make that payment. But that number would be the exact same number, what was wired would be the same number that he has to disperse, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then you would have the invoices, you would have the invoices for the backup, that number.
Correct, yeah, we'd just be tracking them and have all the backup documentation.
And what we could do is we could create some kind of a portal that the residents could go and see the use of the money, that it's going in the right place, it's siloed in exactly where it's supposed to go. You're going to basically audit it monthly. It's not going to be an extensive job, because you're not going to be writing that many checks.
Yeah.
Okay, because most of these are construction projects, so it's going to be a draw every so often. So you, and then you would create a report that would, again, come to the board and then also be available for any resident to see where this money is being spent. Because that seems to be one of the issues, that they're borrowing money, what are we going to do with it? They don't, all that stuff.
Yeah, that's correct.
We would identify it, it would be in a silo, it would be clean as a whistle, correct?
Correct, yeah, just for tracking and transparency purposes, yes.
And the only reason that I'm including you, it's not because I don't trust Ron, I just want this to be, it's actually to protect Ron, that any accusations that Ron might be, you know, shifting money from here to there, that's not the case. And nobody has any influence, whether the city manager does, or I do, or anybody has influence on him to do that. But just to be 100% transparent and to be a stickler on, you know, having a policy.
Correct.
It would be done by you.
Yeah, correct.
Because you're independent, you're an independent charter official, you give your little blessing on it every month, you shoot us a little report,
Correct.
how the money's being spent, and then you'd have a balance. So it'd say... So it'd say, it was $6 million to start with and now it's down to, you know, four points.
Right, it'd just be like a running, a running total.
Yeah, running total. So then, and then, and then it would be, if in fact, we, it would be wonderful if we had money left over, right? We didn't say we didn't spend. Yeah, we, we estimated X amount and we only, we, you know, X amount estimated $4 million and we only spent 3.8. If we had money left over, then that would be a board decision on what to do with that extra money.
Correct.
Whether it's to, you know, use it in some other way, pay down the debt, you know, make a big lump sum, whatever. So we would, so are you, are you comfortable with that?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, and Ron, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, yes, we worked that out the other day with you.
Yeah, I just want everybody to know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, and, and therefore, this is not a slush fund. It's going to be a fund directly used for the purpose in which it's borrowed. So I'm just going to say, I'm not inclined to deviate from the charter and send this to a referendum. We have a representative form of government whereby our elected officials make decisions on our behalf. The charter's clear on this one. I, I choose to follow the charter. So now I'm going to go to Commissioner Banther.
Thank you. I first want to thank Commissioner Kuliass for his diligence in that presentation. I, you know, for the record, don't agree with much of it, but I want to thank him for his efforts in that. Talking for 90 minutes is not my specialty and he did it, he did it well. Despite, I disagree with, 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 with some of the subject matter. And, you know, I think, I kind of want to start in a, in a, in a holistic manner. The mayor covered the finer, the finer points of, of the technicalities and the accounting? And all, all of which I support. There was a lot of accusations made by the commissioner against the mayor, against the, the, the city manager, et cetera. And I'm not here to debate those, those, those points, especially if, if they don't involve me. But as we've continued on this board to improve how we communicate with each other? And with the public and with the residents? I think we have to keep in mind that reasonable minds can differ. And that's a very old saying, but it's something I use very often. You know, I've had people appear on, on this board, I'm not going to go into details, but they have said some of the slanderous things about me. And even though that is, that is, that is the case and it's on the record? I still don't imply any ill will towards, towards anyone on this board and, and, and what their motives are. I believe each person on this board is working the best they can for the city of Tarpon Springs. I believe we all have the same end goal, we just have different ways of getting there and that's okay. That's why there's five of us up here, okay? That, that's, that's a good thing. We also need to stop all this business, and I've heard it from, from, from several people? And I might have been, have been guilty myself? That some are elected and some are not. We are all elected. Whether or not we're opposed or not is completely up to, up, 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 up to you all. So I could sit here and argue that it's, you have more clout if you are elected? Because you stood the election, you won the election? And I could stand up here and argue that if you're unopposed? That's the biggest vote, like, you know, vote, vote of, vote of like approval? I've been in both scenarios before. I've won elections and I, and, and, and I've been unopposed. So I kind of want us to move away from that as a board, as we imply that one person on here has more clout than the other. We, we are all equal up here. As far as this referendum goes, you know, I'm, I'm a big person in sticking to, to our charter. And for the record, I, I did look up the, the, the Huffin property vote. I was not on the board then, it, it, it was back in 2020. I, you know, if, if, if our charter doesn't call for us to send this to a referendum? I don't think we should. And, and I've, and I've been saying this since I got on the board back in 2013? We had much smaller items that I had fellow commissioners want to go out to, to, to referendum for. And I understand those, those, those sentiments. It's, you know, kind of a pure form of like democracy, if you will. But we were elected up here to make, to make, to make tough decisions. And that's just how it is. It is on everyone on this board, all, 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 all five of us? If we do this financing or not? We don't need to outsource leadership every time we have a hard vote. Otherwise, what's the point of us up here? We could have a machine or we pull you all through Facebook and we just do like, you know, your will. Your will is expressed every, every two and three years in the ballot box. And that's how it should be. If I don't do my job, you got to put somebody, somebody better in, correct? And that goes for everybody up here. So I have respect for each one of my commissioners. I do believe reasonable minds can differ. And even though Commissioner Kuliass and I differ on this financing approach? I have respect for him and I have respect for the time and efforts he put into this presentation tonight. Again, I'm not going to go over all the technical matters that, that, that have already been covered? In the interest of time? But some of what was set up here that, you know, we have to live with our decisions on this board and that's true? It goes back to what I started saying by, you know, we're, each one of us here is invested in this community. I was born and raised here, I'm raising my, my two daughters here, I have two businesses here, all my family lives here. It, it would be foolish for me. Now, I, I could be wrong in my approach? But it, but it would be foolish of me to, to intentionally move forward any kind of, you know, like legislation? Financing budget that I did not feel was in the best interest of, of, of the city? It doesn't mean I'm right, but that goes back to, we have to stop impugning negative motives towards, towards people. I believe that everyone up here is working in the best interest of these citizens. There was some things said about our city manager? And his, his previous experience? And, you know, the smaller budget in his, in his, in his, in his previous city? I was not on the board when he was hired, I believe my four colleagues were. I support their decision whole, 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 wholeheartedly to hire him. I think he's done a phenomenal job coming in this role, facing two back-to-back hurricanes of which we've never seen in my lifetime. And the fact that, you know, and Commissioner Kuliass has said it many times and he's absolutely correct? The fact that our storm response, as far as debris, pickup and management and handling of that? Far surpassed any municipality in the city of Tarpon Springs? That has to go to our, to our city manager's credit. And they hired him knowing he came from a small city with a, with, with a, with a small budget. So, you know, that, that's, you know, and I believe they made the right decision. So I'm not going to sit here and say, well, because you manage a small budget? You must not know what you're doing? And therefore, we shouldn't do any, any, you know, you know, any of this financing? And a lot of what was said tonight, if I would say half of it's true, I believe it's very serious matters. Things that we should have the internal auditor investigate? And, and I would submit to you, you know, possible, you know, intentional, like, you know, wrong, 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 wrongdoing? None of which I believe has happened. But there was some pretty heavy things set, set here tonight. And this process has been extremely transparent. And I know we, we've probably got, what, 60, 70 emails? From different residents in Tarpon Springs and some outside of the city? And again, most of them were for, let's push this to, to, to a referendum? Because they were just given a very small, specific picture of what's going on up here. I mean, we had our first public, you know, public budget hearing all the way back in June. We've had at least, I believe, two, 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 two of the workshops. That third workshop, it was always my understanding, maybe that was me relying on my previous experience? That we usually don't have that third workshop unless at the second workshop, we call for that. So it wasn't a surprise to me, maybe I'm blindsided, but that was no surprise to me. That was a normal cour-, normal course of business. And Commissioner Kuliass, rightfully so, you know? Had concerns about the financing and our various, you know, budget, budget workshops? But none of this came up in this, in this great detail during that. And Commissioner Kuliass has many things, dumb is not one of them, and I mean this with all respect. You are a great investigator. And I just find it hard to believe that, you know, I believe you're being honest tonight? But I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that any wool was, 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 was pulled over your eyes. You're one of the most savvy people up here as far as investigation and research, I just don't believe that. So all, all, all in all, I believe it is up to this board to do the adult things? That we have a lot of deferred maintenance in, in this city. When Hurricane Helene hit, and I live on Oleander Drive over by the high school, I'm, I'm, I'm about 10 feet up? And so the water was only a few inches deep up at, up at my driveway, but two homes down, it slopes down pretty bad. And I was in knee-deep water. And I believe I was put on the commission a, a week or two later. It was before Milton, but it was after Helene. And when I was put back on the commission? I, I reflected back to being midnight in knee-deep water? And Oleander is not waterfront whatsoever. Oleander flooded because the storm system, because the stormwater system was, was completely just overwhelmed. I know we can't stop that completely, but a lot of these projects that we're going to do? There's one up there specifically for, for Oleander, was not put there by, by, by me whatsoever? Would help mitigate this, lessen the flooding and help it recede quickly. The water had nowhere to go. And I said that when I got back on the commission? I would do everything in my power to make sure that did not happen again at that extreme level? If we have, if we have any control in the matter? And that's why I'm here tonight in support of this budget and in, and in support of the financing? Because I believe if we go to a completely cash, cash, cash basis? Which is not good financial practice for a $100 million corporation of which we are? That we will not be able, per our finance director, to do these stormwater projects? And it's not going to get any better weather-wise or climate-wise for us? This auditorium will, will certainly be, be packed? If this commission does nothing? And we can't improve stormwater? And we can't raise and harden those electrical systems? And we don't have sewage for, though, though, for two months? In my opinion, that is completely unacceptable. And it, and it is for that reason that I support this budget and I support the financing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I, I have always said from day one, even back a ways? That we've got to learn to, to agree to disagree up here. Not only up here, but in this community. Unfortunately, what happened, I, I think in, in the, in the public era here? On social media, which I'm beginning to hate actually? And I don't believe in hate. But I think most of you understand what I'm saying. It, it's impossible to tell a whole story sometime on social media. So you get what people want you to get. And it may not be 100% of what's happening. And that's exactly what this issue is. You've gotten information. While I'm not saying was incorrect, I'm just saying there was a lot of information left out. I think what the mayor has shown and what staff has shown here today, tonight? And not just tonight, Commissioner Banther is correct. To my knowledge, we've had three public meetings, this will be the fourth. And we've had three one-on-ones, meaning a commissioner with staff. So to me, there isn't any reason why any of us shouldn't have a pretty good understanding of what's going on. And if we did, we've had the one-on-ones, three of them? In which we could have clarified all those issues. And then if we didn't agree, we can say we didn't agree. And we've heard one here tonight that does not agree. And I accept that. However, I have a track record. I also took the same oath he took, and I've taken it several more times than he has. And I'm proud of that. I'm not bragging, I'm proud, thankful. But I also have a track record. I will not support anything that would threaten the financial health of this community. I would not do it. And what we're bringing to you again tonight? I know some of you say you didn't know. And you know what, I understand that. You can't, everybody can't be in here and everybody can't sit and watch this on TV. But they can or should be able to trust us to do the job we were elected to do. And if I ever get to a point where you can't trust me, come to me and tell me personally? And we'll talk. But you can trust me. And I've shown you that. And this group is trying to show you that. I'm, I'm for this, this, not, but, Ron, but alone? I, I, I too have had, I had flooding in my home. I, in my lifetime in Tarpon, which is over 50 years now? I've never seen the water like it was with flowing. Never have. And I too took an oath. We need to do something about this. Ron, if, if I could have just asked you a couple of questions? The mayor covered most of the ones I was going to ask you. It's obvious that you wouldn't sign off on this if you didn't think it was financially sound, is that?
Oh, oh, correct. And plus it goes through our bond counsel, our financial advisor and our rate consultants, yes.
Okay, so that's established. Some of these projects on the CIP list? That we're, especially stormwater and infrastructure? That we're talking about doing? How old are some of those projects?
How old are some? Some of them go back quite a ways, especially the stormwater ones, especially. I have a slide from 10 years ago of the cost of some of these projects compared to today and stuff.
And we can talk about those dollars when they were actually proposed to the CIP list? To where, what we're likely to pay for them today to have them done? And, and you guess how much that is in inflation wise?
Well, these were six stormwater projects here on the slide here from 2015. Same, I made sure they're the same exact projects, descriptions, excuse me? And they totaled 2.6 million back in 2016. Now in 2026, the estimated cost is 15 million, so it's an increase of 12 million, 12.4 million.
12 million dollars. It, I think it's rather obvious that most of the projects, projects on that list that you showed? Especially streets and, and the, the other sidewalks and the sewer and, and stormwater, especially stormwater? Are needed. And many of them have been there on that list for years. Not days, not months, years. And this group here is biting the bullet, financially strong bullet? And telling you it needs to be done. And if we don't do something with a wastewater treatment plant? We're going to lose it, folks. Because not only are we in line for flooding on that? We're, we're going to be in violation with DEP? If we don't start changing that, that whole scenario across the street? And we're trying to do that. This body's actually trying to do it. And I hope that what you've seen here tonight shows you that? That we're not doing something that's financially unsound? Why would we do that? We all live and worked here, all of us. There's a tomorrow, I hope? And I'm planning on it. And I wouldn't want to disappoint any of you? Because then I would be disappointing me. And I'm not going to do that. No, Sid.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. It's always the blessing to be the fifth speaker? Because a lot of things do get spoken. You know, PK, you did a great presentation, I will tell you that, you always do? You do a lot of fact-finding? And, but unfortunately, you present certain parts of this? And I think at one of the meetings, I kind of agreed with you and you posted that on social media? That I was not in favor of this? But what I said to clarify was I was not in favor of it unless we dictated what we were going to use it for? Because as the wording that was used here is a slush fund is not what I am looking to do a slush fund. And I want to be as responsible as every comment that was made up here. So I'm going to do some speaking about some of the things that I did my own research? But before I do that? I, I want to agree with Commissioner Banther. You were extremely explicit in every point you made. I agree with every word and syllable that came out of your mouth. You, you nailed it right to the T of where my head is at. We did speak about these projects before? On numerous occasions? And we kind of all spoke that we were all in favor of, you know, spending the money because it was well-needed? You unfortunately were on the other side of that? And, you know, I give you credit for, for, you know, trying to, in my opinion? Grasp at straws, but I don't know if you have the, the wherewithal to change my mind? We've suffered through four years of inflation? And we're, as a, as a country, we're at $37 trillion? And as people shop and go out to purchase things? Everything has gone through the roof. Our police, fire, police, all the vehicles have gone from 50,000, 75,000 to $100,000. You know, we, the, the fire chief has bought a, we had to buy a hook and ladder? That was $1.5 million. we had to buy a hook and ladder that was $1.5 million. And we had to buy it five years in advance because it takes that long, you know, to do. You know, we bought a boat. We have money for the Spring Bayou, which is a blessing to Gus Villaracas. He got us the $2 million. We had $1.6 that we have to come up with. But we have no funds for Phase Two. I will just say it is kind of almost ridiculous to do Phase One and to leave Phase Two just sitting there. So we're going to need to do things. And just for those who don't know, Phase One is from the boat launch to Tarpon Avenue. Phase Two is from Tarpon Avenue to Canal. Eventually, we have to deal with Canal Street flooding. These are just certain things. My topics will go all over the place because people spoke about things. We have the Beckett Bridge. I do sit on Forward Pinellas. Right now, there's no money from Pinellas County for the Beckett Bridge. And there's no money to do Fred Howard Park. A lot of these emails that came in, they came in with people that had excellent meaning, but they just didn't understand what we understand up here. So they were complaining about Witcomb Bayou. They complained about the bathrooms. They just complained about everything that was on their list. But they don't understand that that's not how we judge things because we know what we're supposed to cover and what we're not. The golf course, we did agree with. We all voted for it. We haven't even spoken about, we just sent the dredge survey out to be redredged on the back bays that has never been done in the history of Tarpon. On the charter, it's supposed to be done every three years. We haven't done it in 30 years. We haven't done it as long as Tarpon's been around. That could come in at $5 million. I'd love to know where we're going to get the money from, you know, from for it. Okay? I'd like to ask you, Ron, on this 7.5 million that FEMA still owes us, when they do pay us, which they kind of have to, what will that money go towards? Will that be help to prepay these loans back down? Are we going to use it for something else? I'm curious on that.
Well, it's going to go back to the funds that had the expenses. So the $8 million of debris, that'll go back into the sanitation fund where it was expensed out of. The balance is mostly overtime supplies. About $2 million that'll go back in. If it's general fund, it'll go back into the general fund. If it was water and sewer, we keep track of it. It'll go back into the water and sewer fund and stormwater fund.
So we've kind of utilized some other funds, and now we just have to replenish it, is correct?
Correct, yeah.
So when we borrow this $19 million plus, will this raise taxes for the public?
No.
Okay, so it's just that we're taking money in advance on 10 years, from 10 years of what we would normally do to get some of these projects done while we still are able to do this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. There was comments made that we squandered COVID funds. Did we squander COVID funds?
You're talking ARPA funds?
ARPA funds, sorry.
No, we had the list of projects up there that were approved, that...
So this board approved it all?
Every, every project was approved by the board.
Okay, and how many millions do we still have left?
We've got $1 million left.
I know that answer. Thank you. So we didn't even squander that. And the prior board, before Commissioner Kulas, myself, some of that money was dictated prior than us getting in, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we only had control over some of that money. The prior board did, you know, put projects there before that. One of the things, when you become a commissioner, that most people don't understand is you are not at liberty to decide on how you run the city, you know, from the past decisions that were made. You have to live with those. So whatever was done before is what we now have to take. And the hot potato and the football is now handed to us. And we have to take that and run with that ball. So if, just like as the commissioner said, if we borrow this $10 million, the boards after us have to run with the fact that they have to pay some of this back. But they're also running with the fact that we have nipped some of the projects in the bud so that they don't have to. So it's a give and take. You know, it's funny that we, if we're going to critique this $19 million, and I'm going to touch a sore subject, we had no problem buying a high-water vehicle for $500,000. I sat up here and met with the motor department and said we needed one VAC truck. We voted for two VAC trucks. Back in the day, the VAC truck was $150,000, $155,000. And now the VAC trucks are $540,000. We bought two of them. So when I'm listening to someone who's being careful about money, you have to be careful in every aspect of how you spend that money. Actually, the board didn't even know at the time that there were four VAC trucks. They were under the understanding because they were only speaking about replacing two. So, you know, I do take a little bit of offense when we're, you know, nickel-and-diming this. But we're not nickel-and-diming all the decisions that are being made. So we have choices to make. You know, I ran, I'm one of the people that was the only one that ran against another candidate, as was said, which I don't have a difference between somebody who walked in without competition or was, you know, elected by the people. I was elected by the people. But I do not see that me being higher or lower than anybody else. But you know, the people I ran against were an advocate against infrastructure. They wanted infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. Well, there's no way you could do any infrastructure if you don't have the money to do it. As we've heard, there's only $200,000 left in the penny fund when this is all said and done. So it would be horrible for me to be sitting up here and not being able to at least borrow some money, as was all spoken about, is how we'd still be in debt ratio less than everybody else. There's nobody that comes in here, buys a house, and just plunks down all of the money for the house. There are a few people that do it, but most people have to take out a loan to do it. That is exactly what we're doing. Personally, I would not have made the comparison, and I've said this to the city manager, I would not have made the comparison that we've, you know, have all the funds for this and the firehouse and all of these things as, you know, the interim mayor said that we have. Why are we refinancing it? If people understand what a home equity loan is, that's what it is. You know, we, at the end of every year, we can't save money. We have to spend every dime we have. And, you know, the fact that we took all that money and paid for it, but now we would like to take out a, what I would call a home equity loan, to borrow against it, to use it for something else, and spread those payments over 10 years, is not the worst thing in the world. And I agree with my fellow commissioners. I know there was a comment made that the residents know what they're doing. And I followed the charter revision commission. I was at every single meeting. And I know how hard it is to get information into the referendum to explain. Most of the people that I know were calling me on the phone and asking me. It was very difficult to explain to people why you needed to do what you do. So it was said that they were very knowledgeable, and they didn't want to change to $25,000 to $50,000. I honestly didn't think that was a wise decision. I wanted the $50,000. You can't buy anything today for $50,000. We wanted to change the $350,000 to $500,000. Again, that you cannot buy any property for 500, even for $350,000. So, you know, as the commissioner states that that was wise decisions made by a referendum, I don't believe that was a wise decision by the referendum decision. And I'm not saying that the people that made the decision were not wise. What I'm saying is that the people that had to make the decision either didn't make themselves well-aware of what it was or, you know, they just didn't know and just guessed at it. The other thing is when you're dealing with a referendum, you're dealing with a purchase mostly of land. Do you want, does the public want to buy the land and own the land? Or does the public not want to buy it? That's decisions that they need to make. The decisions of infrastructure, we were put here and elected, one way or another, whether we walked in, whether we were elected, to make those decisions. If we had to make each and every one of those decisions through going through a referendum, we would get nothing done in this city. If I had to wait for each election to ask whether, you know, something is, whether the people need something or not, that's my job to do. And as Commissioner Banther said, if we don't do the right job, you have to not vote for us again. But, you know, a lot of the things that we get to deal with, we're kind of stuck with. I know somebody spoke about the Witcomb Bayou flooding. You know, it was very interesting. If Pinellas County didn't listen to us for 50 years, I don't know how much they're going to listen to us if this city manager goes and talks to them as well. I do sit on Forward Pinellas. There's just no money for it. And, you know, what could you do? You know, we have Fred Howard Park that doesn't have bathrooms. And they're not going to fix that for maybe a year or two years. You will have the porta-pods out there. So why are they not fixing it? There's no money. What else can I cover for you? You know, prior boards, when we were going to buy the spill site for the dredge, the board decided to, instead of purchase it at a nominal rate, which what it was at the time, they decided to rent it at $50,000 a month. And there was just, it was a total waste of money. But again, I can't go back and go into their head at what they had at the time to make that decision. I guess it was the decision that they were going to make. But I don't want to make that mistake and do something where I'm kicking the can down the road for some other commissioner that has to make an important decision. I have pictures here that I've shown some of the board members of the color water that comes to my house. And if I don't have filters on my water, and these are the complaints we all get. We get the phone calls that the water, it looks like the inside of those pipes. It is a travesty that we have a great RO plant, but yet the water, the clean water, has to go through these horrible pipes to get to our house where we actually need another RO plant just before it gets there. So, you know, I have these pictures if anyone wants to see it. But, you know, we know it. We get these pictures on Facebook where people are showing it looks like tea is in their water cup. So it would be irresponsible to not have an infrastructure where we change the cast pipes and the galvanized pipes. Everybody that knows anything about pipes knows that they're just going to get worse and worse until we have to take it apart. We lose pressure every place. So as far as I'm concerned, I will be, I think it's my duty to borrow the money. But I will only do this, as I've said, to know the projects that we're going to utilize it for, which a number of these projects are all within my wheelhouse for what I think will only help the public. A lot of the public, a lot of the public sent us compliments where they want infrastructure done. Oleander is one of these streets that floods all the time. Peninsula floods. Seabreeze and Riverside floods all the time. We can't have that. You know, I had a conversation with our new Public Works person, and we went over, he and I went over some of the hotspots in the city. I kind of spoke to him, as I spoke to Bob, about trying to get inline pumps because some of the low-lying areas that we have, the water doesn't go uphill. Everybody knows that. So we may have to spend money to put in pumps to help people get that floodwater out. Pretty much, that's where I'm going to go. I hope that, you know, we keep and maintain. I think we're going to stay as a four-to-one vote. I do appreciate your presentation. It's really, it was good. You did a lot of hard work. I just don't agree with it. But I will say that, you know, you kind of have to toe it down a little bit on the social media thing because you just can't use, well, you can, but you just can't use derogatory, you know, deceit. Nobody deceitfully did anything. There were words in there that kind of really got me a little bit, you know, because I got to see it. And people are texting me and saying that I don't think the mayor was deceitful. I don't think the city manager was deceitful. I know he came from a smaller town, but that doesn't make him an idiot, you know? And it doesn't make him an idiot that he's dealt with a smaller budget. We all interviewed him. We chose him. It's our job to support him. I think he's doing a great job. I think he's still in the honeymoon stage. He's still learning things. But, you know, just because you put another zero at the end of a budget doesn't mean, you know, that you don't know what you're doing. You know, my house budget has less zeros than the city. But I still know how to manage the budget of the city different than I manage my house. But if you ask my wife, I'm just as frugal on the money that gets spent in the city as that gets spent in my house. So I am not going to just go haphazard and just purchase things. I purchase what I feel the city needs to maintain the beauty of this city. And, you know, again, all you created was people saying that we're going to use it for beautification. We're going to use it for this. So it sent everybody into a tissy.
That was the truth.
Well, okay. I don't think so. I am finished. I've said my piece. And just thank you all for listening. I appreciate it.
We're going to go to public comment, and then we'll come back for a motion. Is there any public comment on this item?
Debbie McKinney, 1021 Rose Tree Lane. I've been at every budget meeting. I've been at every budget workshop that public was allowed. I don't know if there were any more. I want to thank you, PK, because you organized this meeting that should have happened during one of the other budget meetings.
Sure.
Okay, so I appreciate you bringing all of this forward because I also wanted to hear both sides. So thank you. The loan. I trust Ron. I trust the board. And I trust the city manager. And I agree that it's something that we should do. It's something I would have done if it was my household to take care of what's needed to be done now and pay for it for me to enjoy in the future. Everything that's on that list is for everybody. There's no special projects. So I appreciate that. And I just want to say I agree with this loan.
Thank you. Any other?
Here at Lacus 514 Ashland Avenue. As mentioned, I appreciate the fact that Commissioner Kulas has brought numerous things to our attention that might not have been visible before. In general, my general philosophy is for these types of projects that residents are going to have the advantage of having or using over the next 10 years, it's only fair to amortize it or spread that cost out to everybody. I don't feel like residents that, over the next one or two years, should have to absorb all the cost for the seawall repair or any of these other things. Do want to point out a couple of things that I heard tonight that I'd like to get some background or clarification on. One, as far as the reverse osmosis water plant, it was mentioned $45 million in bonds. And it was mentioned 30 years. Now, $20 million was given to us by Swift Mud. So I don't know if that was put up front or if that has been put into a fund that we're earning interest on to pay over the 30 years or how many more years we have on those funds left. So I think that's a big missing picture. Another missing picture I have is over the years, we've done a lot of inter-fund loans. we've done a lot of inter-fund loans. And the golf course has been the recipient of quite a number of those loans, inter-fund loans from water sewer sanitation. I have seen nothing to know the status of those inter-fund transactions. Have they all been paid off? Have they all been reimbursed? Are there funds that are sitting in a pile somewhere waiting to be used to reimburse it? So there's some factors that affect the whole financial aspect of our debt service. I don't think 4% or in that range of debt service is not unreasonable. I agree with the majority of the commissioners in the fact that these are benefits that the whole city will benefit from. It's not, as Debbie mentioned, any one particular project. So it's not Commissioner Banther Street or not Commissioner Eisner Street, Riverside. You know, everybody in the city is going to be equally affected. So at this point, as Commissioner Eisner mentioned, if we have a definitive list of exactly where those funds are going to be used and where those funds that have been appropriated previously, because I heard 8.2 million was already pre-arranged for four and 4.2, and the mayor mentioned 7.6 left, but that doesn't add to 19.3. So just, we need to have a better understanding of where all those dollars would go. But otherwise, I would recommend going forward with some type of financing for those long-term capital projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Tim Kofalos, 205 Leafwood Road. Came tonight prepared with a different speech than I'm going to say. It's apparent by the three and four comments by the commissioners that it's going to pass tonight to borrow the money without referendum. I'm against it, but I know it's going to pass, so there's no sense in arguing. I'm just going to read something. And I want to say that we have to, we have to judge you by your integrity and hope that you will do well. I want to read something. I asked the St. Pete Times AI a question while I was sitting out there. And I want to read what the comment was. But my question was, has the city ever been insolvent? This is from their AI. Historical information suggests that while Tarpon Springs has faced severe economic hardship, it has not officially gone solvent, insolvent, rather. The city was noticeably at risk during the collapse of the sponge industry in the 1940s and during the national financial crisis in the late 2000s. But it was able to recover through economic diversification and disciplined fiscal policies. All of you were talking about how we didn't do things in the past and we let things go. Disciplined fiscal policies is what they're saying kept us from going broke. Many of you were here, many of you weren't. Collapse of the sponge industry, the 40s and 50s, the sponge blight. In the 40s, marine blight and red tide destroyed the Gulf's national sponge beds. Now, of course, we're not tied to that as much. Although in 1968, my father came down to buy real estate and he could have bought most of the sponge docks for half a million dollars. But he didn't see it as a wise investment. Economic depression. With the local economy near wiped out, many Greek-American residents and divers left to find work elsewhere. The town entered a prolonged and difficult financial period. My in-laws were one of those. They moved to South Carolina and my father-in-law became a painter. The Great Recession, 2008, statewide financial trouble. The financial crisis of the late 2000s caused severe financial problems for many Florida municipalities, raising concerns for Tarpon Springs. This is the kicker. Strong city reserves. However, the city was in strong financial position at the time. A 2009 article reported that Tarpon Springs Reserve Fund amounted to 44% of its general fund, providing a significant buffer. Fiscally conservative policies. City officials attributed their financial health to years of fiscally conservative management, which insulated the city from the worst effects of recession. It goes on and on about the hurricanes of the '24 and up till today. If this is going to work, which it's going to pass tonight, if it's going to work, you better keep off your butts and make sure that it works. Because when you're out of office, you better still be looking over who's in here and what they're doing with the money. Got $20 million plus 112, 115 million in a budget. And we went from, when I first ran for office, it was $55 million. It's jumped since then in the 90s to now over $100 million. I realize everybody's budgets have gone up. And I realize that the cost of vehicles and everything else that goes with it. But I also realize that the fiscal conservancy of the past has brought us to where we are today, that we are not, we weren't in that position to be broke. If we have a bad year, a bad two years, I don't know what you're going to do to pay for this. I don't understand. Originally, the Pennies for Pinellas, my understanding was when you first started.
Tim, your three minutes are up.
When you first started doing the Pennies for Pinellas, it was for new projects only. These aren't all new projects only. Thank you.
Thank you again. David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Designing society is really nothing new. Governments, they've been failing at it for about 2,000 years now. Deliberately manifesting designs of individual or personal aggrandizement has befallen many governments of the past. Benefiting individual politicians on matters that are purposeful in the build, aggrandizing de facto issues of interest based on past deliberate neglect and omission of duty does not legitimize de facto charges or taxes to be placed upon residents using our past neglect or omission of reasonably foreseen and expected duty of government does not justify a strategized emergency financing plan on matters that should have been routinely and systematically maintained through the past. Danbury Baptists in 1801 warned us of a government that wishes to rise on wealth and importance on the deliberate subjection and impoverishment of the people. That water pipe there has been deliberately neglected. That's just a small example of what's going on chronically through this country. That water pipe, I suggest, I guess, is upwards of 80 years old and should have been replaced 40 years ago. That's purposeful and neglect. And that's a chronic issue nationwide. Some of us feel that our society is being deliberately set up through the wizardry of our politicians, setting us up to future direct forms of taxation, allowing our infrastructure to fall into deliberate disrepair and giving them cause to qualify assessments and levies and direct forms of taxation against the residents in order to pay for now having to replace these infrastructure scheming projects that have been purposeful in the build. I believe the civilian population is being subjected to matters that are deliberate in the making. And I question the means upon how we got here. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments? Okay. Austin, do we have any remote comments?
This time?
No, this, no. Okay. All right, let's come back to the board.
Mayor, I'd like to rebuttal on a couple of things that was said about, from some people. And we're going to go, we already know where this is going. But this board better be ready that they are selfishly gobbling up money for the future projections of the city and the capital improvement project structure based on the fact that they don't have money to burn. And they can sit there and I'll tell you what. You saw the mayor. He stumbled over his words. And I'm not taking this lightly from anybody on this board. Because when I see someone who flip-flop the minute they become mayor to act like you're doing well for the community.
Does this have anything to do?
Oh, I'm getting to my points, Mayor.
No, no, you're not making a point.
Yes, I am.
You're just driving home the same, same old.
And it's the God honest truth. And you're going to have to listen to it. And then you guys can make the deal deceiving these residents.
Is there a motion?
So like I said, the stormwater projects.
We're not coming back for additional comments. We need a motion.
I'll say a motion at the end then.
Okay, good.
These people are willing to admit they're going to rush stormwater sewer water projects that they couldn't pay for just to raise all of your bills each month. And on top of it, none of them have really articulated where they stand behind the financial ability for this board. We have Commissioner Banther, who says he disagrees, but he can't articulate it. We have Frank DiDonato over there, who talks about trying to look out for the community, but he don't even open up his book.
All right, a little respect.
Commissioner Eisner, I give him respect. I understand it. And as far as the mayor.
Afforded you when you were mayor. So that's enough.
He has flip-flopped so much, this board's going to fall on their face with this loan. I have enough said.
There you go. You said it. Okay. So if there's no motion, this issue is over.
Yeah, a motion that this item be brought as a referendum in front of the citizens of Tarpon Springs with a laid-out plan of projects. And then once approved in March, it be implemented into the budget by Ron and staff.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it dies of a second. Dies of no second. Okay, let's go to item number nine, which is the compensation reorganization, city manager. You going to read the resolution? Do you need to read the resolution? Okay.
Resolution 202553, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes to the employee pay plan, updated job description, city manager reporting structure, specific department reorganizations, new position requests, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this item is coming back to you. We, at the last meeting, a number of changes directed by the commission. We've made all those changes. We had a new report generated by the consultant. We've included that in your packet. We also made the additional change of removing the two senior administrator positions, which I believe was the desire of the board. So we're asking for your approval on this resolution so we can incorporate it in the budget. So everyone has seen it. Let's go to, let's just go down the list. I don't have any questions. I'm, I'm fine with the, the adjustment to the reorg. And Commissioner Banther?
No, I believe everything that we discussed in the workshop has been presented in this final resolution and I'm in support. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I don't have anything additional.
Okay. Commissioner Kulias?
Yes, I got questions about the reorg inside the public services. Mr. Cotto, can you come up forward, please? Is that Public Works Director?
He's not here.
No, yes, he is.
Oh, I thought you said Mr. Keiger.
Sir, we recently had this reorg brought in front of us with two individuals inside Public Works for this reorg. And you weren't hired yet. You've just been recently added. All right, obviously, the memo came in. It came in through Mr. Robinson, but included you through, to the city manager. Have you really had enough time to see if this reorg is something that you're willing to push forward through? Or have you even had time to set your feet and, and make that type of decision? Because we denied this. And we said we want the new Public Works Director to come and make that decision. Have you had enough adequate time, you think? And if you have, that's a good answer. But if you haven't, I don't like that reorg part being pushed through us when we initially said no and putting it through the pay study.
Okay, well, I've been on the job a little over a week. And at this point, you know, I can say that to date, I'm favorably disposed towards reorganization. But I'm going to defer to Bob here to talk about it a little bit more because he's been here a lot longer than me and knows a lot more history there.
Thank you, sir.
That's what I know at this point.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. I served as the interim Public Works Director for four months. And we did bring that original item to you. And as you said, you'd asked us to bring it back as part of the budget cycle. So that's what's, that's why you're seeing it now. I think Mr. Cotta is, as he said, he's brand new. But he and I have had numerous discussions about this as a structure. He does support the idea of having an assistant Public Works Director. And if you notice the memo, it's written in a way that allows him the choice to do it as one or two and formulate it however he wants with approval of the Human Resources Director and the city manager. So there's flexibility built into that.
Okay, I just want to make sure too, the pay rates for those two individuals before, when we had this budget workshop or whatever it was, is it changing now of this organizational structure upon what we originally agreed upon?
No, it would target the same pay range as the original proposal did. And it will function within the new pay grades that are being established, should you approve those tonight.
Perfect. All right, thank you, sir. Also, like I said, we saw how this pay study went. It was one of the city manager's first projects. I'm hoping we really look at the lower-level people, field entry people, and not ignore them like we did at this last study. So the only reason why I'm supporting it is because we did take into account in front, for these field workers. But I'm really hesitant for upper management, such as the city manager or a few others, to receive that raise within two years. I thought it should have been within three. But I'm just going to go along with this to look out for the field workers. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't remember that we had not wanted these two positions. I know we didn't want the two positions of the assistant city manager. But I don't recall this. This actually looks like a good idea. You know, because it splits it up, the solid waste, fleet maintenance, and building grounds maintenance. And then you have administrative parks and parkways, streets and stormwater marina. So I mean, especially when, you know, I had a nice meeting with Chris today. He would be able to get the input from two separate experienced people and be able to, you know, it wouldn't be all on his shoulders right away. So, I mean, I support this. I, I think it's good sometimes to split up the amount of work that needs to be done. It's a lot of different moving parts in this. So, and, and I feel very comfortable. By the way, I had a very good meeting. I appreciate your honesty and your, you know, your ability to learn. I know it's the first week, so it's not the time to throw hand grenades at you. I know it's the first week, so it's not the time to throw hand grenades at you. But, you know, I appreciated your honesty and your hard work, and I would expect you still to lean on Bob a little bit. And I offered you any kind of help that you could, you know, need, as far as advice. You know, but I was happy with the discussion that we had, and I wanted to make that public. So I wish you the best of luck, and anything we could do to help as a board, or me personally, I'm happy to help you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to public comment. Is there any public comments on this item?
Well, before you start the time, can we at least get updated information? That's from the last thing. And if you could, put up the organizational chart. Peter Lakkis, 514 Ashland Avenue. First off, I do have some issues where in the city manager memorandum, it references a number of appendices. And the original report was listed as Appendix B, and then the job classifications Appendix C, but it does not show up in the backup online. In fact, I had to make a records request and didn't get the records till today to see what attachment B and C you are. So if you wanna be transparent, you reference an item, put it up there. Now, as far as this organizational chart, I would like to hear as the philosophy or how the departments were decided on being changed. Now, I understand the fire chief is set to be the assistant city manager, and that's maybe why fire is there. But I'm trying to look at the grouping there. You've got building development, P and Z, planning and zoning, fire, cultural services, and library. Now, to me, planning, zoning, building, code enforcement, and you should also have economic development in that, because they function together. I don't see why the library and the fire are under the assistant deputy city manager in that regard. Also, as far as... Where is it? I'm trying to find it here. Planning and zoning, operational. I think that's fair to move the arborist over there. I don't have a problem with that. It was just mostly the fact that I'm trying to see why these were, you know, separated as far as in that regards. I don't see a problem with having the supervisors, directors, in the way you've split it up with public services and public works. That seems to be a fair distribution of duties there. But my biggest thing was how these, under the assistant city manager, were put together. If you're looking at economic development, planning and zoning, building, and code enforcement, they all kinda tie together. I don't see how cultural services and library fit into that. So I would move those and the fire back over to the other side and move the economic development with the planning, zoning, building, and code enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Austin, any comments up there?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, let's come back to the board. Can I have a motion?
Sir, what can we do about this assistant city manager thing? What's our current position with it?
So it'd just be, the fire chief will be the assistant city manager, and he'll... We thought maybe that over the next six months to a year, he could determine who would fill his position as fire chief.
I'd like to request at this point that we go out to advertise for an assistant city manager. I've seen what's happened now. You know, the whole role of being from somewhere in the department and shifting over played a full effect in this whole finance situation that we're in now. You can call it what you want, but we need a full, transparent advertisement of the assistant city manager position. That way, we don't have any one individual, like we see, favor a department that puts us in a financial incapacity to do our capital improvement projects. So that was a good example, and I'd like a full, transparent advertisement sent out for an assistant city manager, someone that we can actually develop in the future. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further comments, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the last item is item number 10, ordinance qualifying date for candidates.
Ordinance 2025-11, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Section 2-13 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Tarpon Springs in its entirety to provide for qualification dates for candidates to the city commission and providing for an effective date of this ordinance. That is Ordinance 2025-11, read by title only on first reading. Advertised August 27, 2025.
Okay, are there any Commissioner comments regarding this? Is there any public comments regarding this item? Austin?
There are no hands raised at this time.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is it seconded? Anybody second?
I'll second if I need to.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, let's go. That concludes all of our items. Let's go to board and staff comments. Chief?
No comments, sir.
City attorney?
No comments.
City manager?
No comments.
City clerk?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes, city manager. I do want two of the things that Commissioner Delakas talked about in the opening public comment. The lights at MLK and 19, mirrors in 19 are definite concerns. Alt 19, sorry. Again, I'm not sure what that process is, but, you know, that shouldn't be a hard fix, if it's possible. If we could follow up on that, please. I do support his comments about lime and saffron, but I know that's a bigger issue, so thank you.
I believe on changing the light there, Alt 19 and MLK, we have to go through DOT. We had to do that when we did it with Tarpon Avenue. And also, but I agree that that should be changed. I've said that light many, many times.
Just see all that. Those are requests that we frequently have made to DOT. They've been rejected. Some of it has to do with the waiting on the lights, is what they tell us. But I've already sent Corporal Smith an email while we're sitting here about getting with the state on that again.
Any other thing I'd like to say? I appreciate everyone for being here, and those of you that likely listened. I came here with the thought of maybe even saying, hey, let's have a workshop, and we'll make it open to questions, and we'll have a special session. And as I listened to the presentation, which most of it was repetitive, there was more information tonight and it laid out better. I wanna thank staff for that. But I think it's been covered rather well. It is puzzling, though, that when you attack somebody's integrity, it really demonstrates that you don't have any yourself. And I don't think this body should be doing that to any of us. There's a place one-on-one for that kind of thing. We all are trying to do our best each and every time we're up here. And to attack anybody up here or out there or whatever, I think is conduct unbecoming. So just wanted to say that for the record.
I agree. Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes, I'd like to see where we're at with the CRA submittal for this downtown empty space. We haven't seen anything about it in a while. Need to have a report, as well as this jitney situation. We need to get this, has there been some middles? Has there been not? We haven't been following up. As far as this item tonight, we have proven with all reasonable doubt, this board is willing to take on capital improvement projects that inflate automatically your rates. That way, we can subsidize what the loan that we're trying to borrow, both in your water and sewer rates at the minimum of $9 a month. And if you think that's really helping you out during this cost of inflation, I apologize on behalf of this board. Also, the board has recognized that they're gonna pull out substantial amounts of money from the departments in which they claim they're going to be funding over the next 10 years. That's gonna deeply affect future boards and capital improvement projects, as we can see. And as far as anybody taking shots at me about integrity, look at yourself when you were mayor as integrity. So as far as that, I got nothing else to say. And if anybody takes shots at me, including the mayor for not wanting to have a transparent view for the residents to vote, well, then I'm just gonna fire right back. So I'm proud of what I do. If it wasn't for me, we wouldn't have thousands of people knowing about this loan that you guys didn't even wanna let the community know about. And it's disappointing that you guys hide behind your so-called dignity, but yet you don't let the people know what's going on. And now they're all gonna get taxed for it now and later on. So I'm embarrassed for this board and their decision-making. Thank you.
Okay, so...
You want me to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know I'm small, but...
I was gonna walk out there, Mike.
So I wanted to read something to just share. You know, I do follow federal government quite a bit, as the mayor knows. Just to give you a throw-out there, Miami Dade is $400 million in deficit for the fiscal year 25-26. And they finally found a little bit of like $66 million, but they are in so much trouble. And this city is not in that kind of trouble. The other thing is, of the financial state of the cities in the United States, a report has found that 54 cities did not have enough money to pay their bills. So we are not anywhere near there, you know. I will say, after four years of heavy-duty inflation, it has made the entire United States a spending, you know, just to keep up with things. Every city is feeling the pain of this, but we still have to give the residents infrastructure and make sure that we keep the city running. There's even one more that I'll just read. Events like wildfires and flooding have twofold effects on city finances. First, money has to be spent on rebuilding damaged infrastructure, such as roads, water lines, public buildings. Second, if a disaster, cities may either act on their own or be required under state or federal law to make expensive investments in preparation for the next storm, which is exactly what we just spoke about with the waste program over there with the electrical. I did cover for the mayor. He wasn't feeling well. I took, I did the ribbon-cutting at the Elfer's Crossing over there. You were sorely missed, but I will also say that...
You tell better jokes than I do.
Yes, and I tell better jokes than he does. It was a very warm event with the sun. But I will say this, I did also speak with some of the people there. I would like to try, at least in Tarpon Springs, get motion sensors at all these lights so that the approaching bicycle, you know, doesn't have to stop, push the button, and then hopefully somebody's, you know, stopping their car. So if we could get that in, I can't seem to get Forward Pinellas to listen to this at all. So if we could do that, and somewhere down the road, I would like to have that as agenda item. It's not brain surgery to put a motion sensor. Everybody's got them on their house, so that's it.
Okay. Well, I wanna thank everyone that, you know, we're getting one step closer to having our budget finalized. We're gonna get a lot of things done. That's important. That's what the residents want us here for. And with that said, Galinita? Adjourned at 10:30.
I wanna know who predicted 10:30.